Good morning, everybody. And welcome to the regular Board of Supervisors meeting this Tuesday, November 25th. One month away from Christmas, if you can believe it. Could we rise, please, for the pledge? Supervisor Toffenelli, will you lead us?
Yes, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of your plan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where religion stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a better creation than God.
Thank you. We'll start with staff announcements.
Good morning, Chair.
All right.
Board members, Lisa Medina at Farm Management Agency and Shawna Roberts. And this is Norman.
Norman?
This is Norman. Norman is a Staffordshire Bull Terrier mix. He's about eight years old and he weighs about seventy-seven pounds. We received him very emaciated, so he still looks a little bit, you know, on the slim side, but he's all muscle. And he's a gentle pup with a big personality. He has acute snorting and snuffling sound. We call a snorkel. He is real gentle and loves humans. His compatibility with cats is unknown at this time. But if you do have another dog, you must bring him for a meet and greet. Our kickoff for pets giving on November fifteenth was a success. We look at any success with any dog or animal that goes home, even one, as a success. But for this adoption event, which kicked off the pets giving through the end of the year, we found two dogs and two cats forever homes. So that was, that was a good thing. Very sexy. Oh, three. Okay, end of, end of the day. Third dog. So we are still looking for donations for our community animals, including canned, dry dog and cat food and kitten food, milk replacement for neonatal kittens that we just got in. And we are happy to say we just got in five kittens that had infections in their eyes and severe complications from that, but they are being fostered now through our new foster program in a loving home and family. And they'll be coming back to the shelter for adoption. So if anybody's looking for kittens, they can have them in here. It's okay. We also need cat litter, puppy pads, collars, indestructible dog toys and cat toys. CCAS also has an Amazon wishlist that can be referred to on our webpage. Please look for our Facebook posts for more upcoming events. More than ever, CCAS will be having additional events in 2026. At our next meeting in December, I will bring back the CCAS, and that's Calaveras County Animal Services Statistics for 2025. And that is all I have for today. Thank you, Shawna. Thanks, Norman.
So are you gonna bring Norma in?
Norman.
Yeah, but I'm gonna bring Norma in there.
Isn't Norman a hunk? Cute.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Sampson.
Morning. Morning, Board of Supervisors. That's a tough act to follow. I'm not cute or cuddly, but I'll do my best. I have an update for you. I have an update for you on per prior board direction on several other board meetings. The planning department will be bringing back, probably in the first meeting of January, a comprehensive list of our long-range planning projects, the priorities of them, and a revised schedule of completion dates for board discussion. What will also be included as part of that discussion is a proposed zoning code amendment project, which will also include looking at private gyms or indoor recreation and entertainment to be allowed in industrial zones or the M2 zone. So I just wanted to make sure the board is aware that I did receive that direction. I'm putting together a board item now, and you'll be seeing that probably the first meeting of January. So just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Morning, Len.
Good morning. Len DeVere, IT Director. I'm here to let the board and the public know that our permitting software will be down tomorrow for a day. We are doing an upgrade that is, that provides sort of the technical underpinnings to improve all of the permitting for the public. That includes doing permitting online, e-payments, including hoping for e-checks and those kinds of things. It's a pretty simple thing. We've done a bunch of messaging to let people know it'll be down, but we just want to take that final step.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions and acknowledgements. Madam Clerk? Our first proclamation?
Item number one is a proclamation from the Sheriff's Office, adopt a proclamation recognizing sheriff's volunteer search and rescue K-9 Jackson for seven years of service.
And I'll pass the gavel over to Supervisor Andal.
Whereas K-9 Jackson proudly served with distinction for seven years as a vital member of the Calaveras County Sheriff's Volunteer Search and Rescue Team. And whereas Jackson was known for his exceptional sense of smell, unwavering focus and tireless work ethic, exemplifying the qualities that make search and rescue dogs invaluable assets to public safety efforts. And whereas Jackson's loyalty, intelligence, agility, and strong work drive enabled him to perform consistently under challenging conditions, earning him a respected reputation among team members and the community. And whereas Jackson was always a warm, fuzzy face, his presence a true source of morale, joy, and emotional support to his human search and rescue team members throughout their missions. And whereas throughout his career, Jackson earned a total of four distinguished certifications, reflecting his extensive training and specialization. From 2018 to 2024, he was certified as an area and large source cadaver and area canine. Between 2020 and 2023, he received certification in small source cadaver detection with additional water certification secured from 2023 to 2025. And whereas these certifications are recognized standards within the search and rescue community, highlighting his skill set across multiple demanding environments. And whereas throughout his service, Jackson responded to forty-six search and rescue missions, was responsible for five successful finds, and provided crucial clues that significantly assisted other search teams. And whereas Jackson participated in countless training sessions, ensuring that both he and his handler, Robin Berwick, maintained peak performance, dedicating approximately 500 hours each year to training and search operations. And whereas the Board of Supervisors wishes to sincerely thank Jackson for his dedicated service and outstanding contributions to search and rescue efforts, embodying the motto, "So others may live", and recognizes that his profound impact will be remembered and deeply appreciated by all who knew him, worked with him, or were aided by him. I just learned that Jackson has passed away. What a legacy he left. This is an outstanding tribute to him. Sheriff?
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to bring Robin, and this is Valhalla with Robin. We had planned this item. Jackson retired in August and unfortunately had medical issues. But we wanted to, our search and rescue team leadership, many of the deputies that are assigned to our SAR team are with us today to show support and respect and recognition for Jackson's service. Our canines are a vital and effective component of our search and rescue team. Thankfully, Robin got Valhalla with black hair because Jackson loved to rub on our legs, usually after jumping in a pond. He'll be greatly missed. Captain Stern was just telling me a story in my office before we came down here when Jackson ran full speed into the back of his knee and almost took him out. But that's how much he loved it, how enthusiastic he was. And then, of course, Robin is, I'm, I'm gonna make her cry anyways, but is one of the kindest, most dedicated souls that you'll meet. And so our search and rescue team leadership really wanted to recognize Jackson for his service because, I mean, the certifications that he got and having the ability to be in a boat over water and smell and detect the scent that he's searching for and how successful he was in his service was awesome. I'm gonna let Lieutenant Greg Stark come up and talk a little bit more about our SAR team, but we just wanted to recognize Jackson and Robin.
So as a board, where our volunteer search and rescue team puts in hundreds of thousands of hours collectively throughout the years, and to say that Jackson was a special dog. I've been with search and rescue for just over twenty-five years, and I can say that if my family was lost in the woods, I'd want Jackson out there. He was a one-of-a-kind dog. Never a loss for energy. And even as a search manager, when the families distraught, the persons are lost in the woods, and we put the call out to our search and rescue team to see who's coming. When Robin's coming with her dog, there's a sense of things are gonna be better. They're a force multiplier. They cover so much ground that searchers can't cover very quickly. Their nose and smelling capabilities are unsurpassed. And it takes both ends of the leash. Well, Jackson was a very special dog, a once-in-a-lifetime dog that I've dealt with. It's the other end of the leash, Robin, where the real magic works. She's an extremely dedicated handler. She's been training dogs officially for twenty years for Calaveras. Valhalla is her fourth dog. She drove all the way to North Carolina to get specialized training. They travel all over the United States for training. And not only that, but she's a trainer for other dogs throughout the region, throughout the state, and a resource for OES. She's called all over the state for her expertise and the expertise that she's given to her dogs. So Jackson was a huge loss to our team. Valhalla, I'm not taking any with Valhalla, but again, Jackson was a once-in-a-lifetime dog that I've worked with and our other community has worked with. So the selflessness that Robin puts forth and the dedication to her dogs comes through in the results, and the results are successful searches. And for that, I just personally, on behalf of this Calaveras County Search and Rescue Team and the Sheriff's Office, want to thank you for everything you've done. You truly take the motto of search and rescue, "So others may live", more seriously than I've ever seen anybody take it. So for that, I want to thank you very much.
Robin, did you want to say anything? Well, thank you for your service. Sorry for your loss, Valhalla. You got some big pauses to fill, but with Robin, I think you're up for it. Okay. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed. Oh, I'm sorry, any, the rest of the board have anything? Yeah, a motion?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors commends and honors K-9 Jackson for his dedicated service and invaluable contributions to public safety, search and rescue, and the community, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this twenty-fifth day of November, 2025.
Come on up. One more. I'm going.
I'll go ahead. We're good. Certainly, we're actually gonna save, save.
Most of the friends. Yeah. Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Good, send it off.
Thank you. We'll move on now to our second proclamation.
Item number two is a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors, adopt a proclamation recognizing November seventeenth through the twenty-first, 2025, as California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week.
Then I'll pass the gavel over to Supervisor Follendorf.
Whereas California counties provide many services that is central to the lives of Californians. And whereas the position of the clerk of the Board of Supervisors Board plays an integrated role in the function of California County Government. And whereas the clerk of the board performs many legal mandate functions that protect and preserve the rights of citizens to an open and accessible government. And whereas the government, whereas the work performed by the clerk of the board is a time-honored and vital part of local government. Whereas the clerk's duty of record-keeping is revered, the work among the earliest recorded on behalf of the public. And the clerks have a long fled to maintain their neutri- their neutri- their neutral and impartial proceedings of governments. And whereas the California Clerk of Board and Supervisors Association, an affiliate of the California Associations of Counties, is organized to promote the principles of good government to represent the interests of clerks of the board with legislative bodies and other professional organizations to encourage the development and professional growth and education and to support the objective of all regional groups established within the association. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the clerks of the board across the fifty-eight counties in the state of California. And I will say, just for me, I know that I would not be successful without the clerks, whether it's Stacy, Robin, Becky, and their staff. From technical difficulty solution to making sure that we show up on time to things. I think they're more than just, they're just more than making sure that the public has access to us. They are making sure that we are doing our jobs as well. And with that, I'd like to open it up. Are there any other, other public comments? Well, okay, I'll bring it back to the board. There's none online, right? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Gary?
I would just like to thank the Burks Office, too, for everything they do, although they don't remind me and make me on time. That's, so I'll give you my committee, and you can. But this, this is so important. This proclamation is so important. If you look at the agenda item, Stacy signed it twice. So it's good.
Are there any other, Ben?
Oh.
Your light went on if you.
Oh, it is. Yeah, that's right, because I turned it on. Um, you know, you, I got something on my tie. You know, stop scratching, you know. There's a lot of good professional direction on keeping composure and moving forward. And yes, Stacy does organize very well for us. And she is much appreciated, along with the, all the staff over there, because it takes the coordination of the whole office on that side to put everything together. So, thank you.
Adam, I'll just echo all of my coworkers. Thank you, Robin, Stacy, Becky, everybody. Always available to help navigate and help me remember which agenda, which item was on, and all sorts of information. Thank you.
And lastly, I would just like to say thank you as well. And I'm sorry Stacy isn't here today, but we're thinking of her.
Hey, if there's no, yeah, if there is a motion. Ben moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras proclaimed the week of November seventeenth through November twenty-first, 2025, as the California Clerk of the Board of Supervisors Week in recognition of the high level of service bestowed upon the people of Calaveras County and the people of California by clerks of the board, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County, State of California, this day, the twenty-fifth of November, 2025. Thank you.
Yes.
So I am accepting it on behalf of Rebecca and Stacy. And as you mentioned, it does take a whole team. I also wanted to mention Landon Sedholt. He is a secondary person back at the office that monitors every single board meeting to make sure that Zoom runs smoothly, along with Becky. And we do really appreciate you guys recognizing the office and continuing your support for us. So thank you.
You want to come up and do a picture? Stacy will be here tomorrow. Do you want to do a photo?
Thank you. We'll move on to general public comment.
General public comment, any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the general public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard.
Thank you. Is there any general public comment today? Mr. Butner?
My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. Lack of transparency, lack of truth, and lack of attention to detail all have consequences. At the December ninth, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting, it will have been ninety days without a resolution since Caltrans installed the Murphy's Highway Four concrete median. At what point do you concede that over two years, you've missed numerous opportunities to ask Caltrans explicit questions about their ill-conceived and hazardous minor B project when you had numerous opportunities to object to it? You were inattentive to details and preoccupied with other matters. Some of you have secondary employment dividing your attention from your primary public responsibilities. None of you took the necessary time, nor gave adequate attention as part of your responsibilities as public employees to understand the consequences of the Murphy's median project. Not District Three Supervisor Hubbard, not Calaveras Council of Governments Board Members Toffenelli and Follendorf, not former Public Works Directors Packenger and Pedro. Caltrans is not without fault in this debacle. Their data-driven justification for the median project was flawed, and their median is unnecessary. I recently filed several public records requests with Caltrans, and my analysis of the preliminary response of records suggests the May 2019 to March 2022 Caltrans Project Justifying Traffic Collision Report summary revealing an average of five point six collisions per year may have been a statistical anomaly. The initial data suggests collisions per year notably declined in the three following years. Also a notable finding, the fatal accident occurred more than thirteen one hundredth of a mile, or two football fields, east of the controlled intersection from where the concrete median ends. We'll review these important findings and facts together here on December ninth. Calaveras County is at fault for not catching this median project in time to object. Stop gaslighting us, be accountable, and stop deflecting with hand-over-heart diversions. The county and Caltrans share the blame for this debacle for different reasons, so stop deflecting blame and misleading the public. Own up and concede your individual and collective errors. Conclusively prove to Caltrans with facts and statistics to support your arguments that they made an error in judgment by burdening our community with this unnecessary highway hazard. Justification may be obtained soon from newly received and analyzed data for the full removal of the median and restoration of Highway Four from post-mile twenty-nine point forty-nine to post-mile twenty-nine point sixty-two. My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com, a government watchdog and accountability blog. You?
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Good morning, Aisha.
Good morning. I'm constantly reminded that I should have chosen a dog like Valhalla when I wear black often, because I own a golden retriever. Good morning, everybody. I last spoke before you, I believe it was on the Fourth of November, and I just wanted to give kind of a quick update on some of the things that have been going on, as I'm kind of calling it the SNAP recovery now, and some of the things that we've been seeing in Calaveras County. We have what we call our Nutrition Assistance Program, which is grocery gift cards for people. Sorry, everyone, I'm with Sierra Hope. Our Nutrition Assistance Program, which is grocery gift cards for those in our HIV/AIDS program, which not only serves residents in Calaveras County, but an additional five counties. That has sat flat. We haven't seen an increase in that. We have seen a twenty-five percent increase in those additional counties, not including Calaveras, for the assistance for the HOPWASTERMU, which is the short-term rent, mortgage, and utility assistance. And that's, once again, to remind everybody, it's in Inyo, Mono, Alpine, Amador, and Toolumi counties. Since our last meeting, however, here in Calaveras County, we've had a three-hundred percent increase in housing assistance requests. We've had a three-hundred percent increase, which quadrupled what our normal output was for assistance for our food pantry. We've had utility assistance skyrocket for us for this time of the year to three-hundred-and-twenty-two percent. We are working closely with Public Health on our Street Health Medicine Collaborative, which is with their mobile medical unit, making appearances at each one of our food pantries, which we moved to weekly. And that isn't just the reason for the increase. The increase in the request for the food pantry was why we went to weekly, and it was, we weren't meeting the need twice a month. I think when I last came before you, I said we would consider it, and it had to change very quickly. So that mobile medical unit does come out once to, one to two times a month at our community food pantry in Angels Camp. And I'd like to thank Supervisor Follendorf, who has been supportive and instrumental in assisting us with its placement. Just wanted to provide an update. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Let's pull seven. Yes.
Number seven?
Number seven, please.
Would any other board member like to pull any of the items? Would any member of the public like to pull any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board and ask if we could get a motion for the other items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Madam Clerk, could you read item seven, please?
Item number seven is an action item from the Administrative Office. Number one, make a public benefit findings. Number two, approve community organizations, district allocations from District Three and District Four, and a total amount of $2,000 for the Sierra Hope Food Pantry.
I pulled this item not because there's anything wrong with it. I wanted to publicly thank two individuals that have really, last minute, we came together and were able to get support to the elementary schools. And one is Superintendent Louise Simpson and Isaiah from Sierra Hope for helping coordinate the effort to get get food to families. And while the SNAP did come back, And while the SNAP did come back, it still, so just with what she just said, with the percentage of increase of need, there still is a need regardless of the SNAP benefits. And it was very shocking how many families are food insecure in our district, in our community. And this, hoping to at least get through the holidays and make sure that some of these families are able to to provide for their children, especially with the kids being at a school where they're going to be losing that access to food every day with the school break. So thank you, board members, for supporting and thank you for Martin for making a match to help them. So I just wanted to do a shout out and it's been a wonderful coordination and collaboration. And I don't think, you know, in down times, beautiful things happen. And I think this is one of the things that really happened, that individuals that normally wouldn't have worked together came together really fast and created a program for the community.
Thank you. With that, would you like, oh, is there any other public comment regarding this item?
Good morning. I'm Louise Simpson. I'm the superintendent at Mark Twain Union Elementary. And I want to thank deeply Supervisor Follendorf and Hubbard. Hubbard, I said that wrong, but you know, kids don't understand politics, but they understand hunger. And we took those bags that Sierra Hope created and we got those out to the families within ten minutes of phone calls. People were showing up. That's how desperate the need was. So this is a partnership across agencies, private, public, and it's so powerful. And I cannot thank you enough behalf of my students and my families. It matters. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call your fathoms mom this time.
And I, and I love that. I'm back. So what was lovely was that Supervisor Follendorf brought us together and saw potential for the partnership. After the last time I spoke before all of you, she addressed the need that these folks weren't getting to the food pantry. And it was something simple that we just hadn't really honestly addressed before or thought of, and that was that we do it on a Wednesday from one to three P M. The families can't get to us. It's either transportation prohibitive or they're working. So we take the grocery bags over to Mark Twain Elementary and they disperse them to the highest need families, both at Mark Twain as well as Copperopolis. And that simply eliminates that issue of access to food. And that's something that by also going weekly, we're realizing is an additional issue. Oftentimes, we think that there's many other things that make it prohibitive, issues of, you know, living less than paycheck to paycheck, all of the things that simply came down to transportation and access. So in this case, we eliminated that and we've added to it. So we're doing thirty-five families. Every Monday, we pack up the bags. They get a bag of non-perishables as well as a bag of meat and produce and things like that that are perishable. And we deliver it to the school and it goes before, well, we try to get it there before. Early, there's a early, I can't think of what it's called, you know, the kids, some kids get out early and then there's the three o'clock kids. So it's like a one, twenty, and three. And they get the access to that food. And then we're doing additionally the normal food pantry on a Wednesday. And that was the big improvement. And it was something that we wouldn't have been able to address before, had it just literally not been put on our radar. But hunger comes in all shapes and forms and sizes and certainly doesn't take a holiday itself. So I just wanted to thank everyone for your support and for bringing the partnership and opportunity to our attention.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Is there any comment online? Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board.
Moved.
All second.
All in favor? Pass is five zero. Before we move on to the regular agenda, we'd like to take a five-minute break, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are back. Thank you. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, item number eighteen.
Item number eighteen is a resolution from planning. Number one, conduct a public hearing. Number two, adopt a sequoet notice of exemption. And number three, adopt a resolution upholding the Planning Commission's conditional approval variance of two zero two five dash zero zero nine, reducing the required twenty-foot setback to three feet to construct a nine hundred square foot detached garage at two two four four Shastin Way and Dorrington.
Thank you. Before I hand it over, I'd like just to go over how this hearing will go. I will open up the public hearing and then I'll ask staff to present and bring it back to the board for any questions. Then I will ask the appellant to give their presentation. And then for the applicant to give their presentation. And then I'll open it up to members of the public. I'll allow the appellant a summation as well as the applicant. And then bring it back to staff and any other questions from the board. I'd like to ask that whoever is giving a presentation or speaking to keep their comments pleased about the variance and to be as brief as possible. Thank you. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Brett Sampson.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Brett Sampson, your planning director. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the appeal of the variance twenty twenty five dash zero zero nine. This was a, for a, originally for a zero front setback variance to a front yard setback. And it was located at, it is located at twenty-two forty-four Shastin Way and Dorrington. I'm going to go through a little bit of history with the, with the project and how we've arrived at this point. I don't have an extensive PowerPoint, but I do have slides available of the site, things that are part of your packet already. So if you want to see something pulled up, we can pull it up to take a look. But originally, this variance came to a August fourteenth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting where they considered a variance for a zero front yard setback for a twelve hundred square foot garage. And there was extensive discussion about the garage. There was a robust public comment. And there was quite a bit of discussion and questions between the planning commissioners and the applicant and just the planning commissioners themselves. At the end of that August fourteenth hearing, the Planning Commission asked the applicant to revise their plans. The applicant agreed. And then subsequently, at an October ninth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting, the applicant came back with revised plans. Those revisions included taking the garage from twelve hundred square feet to nine hundred square feet. What they effectively did is they made, they took the garage from a thirty by forty footprint and they made it a thirty by thirty. They were still requesting the zero-foot setback. After, again, much discussion, many questions, and public comment at that second Planning Commission hearing, the Planning Commission conditionally approved the nine hundred square foot garage. And they added conditions that it was going to be a three-foot front setback instead of a zero front setback. And the requirement to use a sectional garage door instead of a roll-up door. So those were really the, the two additional conditions that the Planning Commission put on the project. So the project went from twelve hundred square foot garage to a nine hundred square foot garage. And then it was further conditioned to be a three-foot setback and to have a sectional garage door. I believe one of the main reasons for the three-foot setback instead of the zero-foot setback is there is an existing garage next to it. I believe that the planning commissioners felt that having that degree of separation of three feet would add, add to the aesthetics and possibly to the safety of, of the area. And so the applicant agreed and the variance was approved on that October ninth meeting. Since then, the, really, I'd like to run you through the findings that the Planning Commission had to make for the variance. And the first finding that they had to make was that there are no special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings. And the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification. And the variance authorized will not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which such property is situated. So the Planning Commission made those three findings. It's for a nine hundred square foot garage, three-foot setback with a roll-up, with a sectional door. Subsequently, that variance approval was appealed. And the appellant provided arguments why they thought the variance should be denied as part of their appeal. And so what I'd like to do is just take you through the appellant's comments and the planning department's responses to those comments. All this information is available to the public and in your packet. I'm just going to summarize the comment and our response. Probably add some, some detail as well. So the appellant, their first comment was in regards to a lack of special circumstances. They stated the, the standards for a variance requires the existence of unique physical conditions that do, that do not apply generally to other parcels. They state, however, this parcel is just like most other lots in Big Trees Village. So they're saying that this property isn't a special circumstance. So in our response to that comment, we state that variance provide relief from the strict application of this title where deprived the property owner privileges enjoyed by similar properties because the subject property is unique and special conditions. So really, we're stating that because of the size, shape, and topography, you know, that this is a special circumstance. County code does not require that a parcel have conditions that do not, do not apply to other parcels, parcels specifically within the surrounding vicinity. Staff found that the topography of the parcel, which has approximately a twenty-five percent slope, constitutes a special circumstance compared to other R one parcels in general. And that finding A has been met. So it's our contention that with the twenty-five percent slope, it's very severe. You know, it, it, much of this comes down to what do you consider the vicinity of the subject property? You know, no matter whether you take a very broad interpretation of the word vicinity and special, special circumstances or whether you bring it all the way down to the street level within Big Trees subdivision. There are many sites within the immediate vicinity of the subject property that do not have the same slope constraints. Really, Shastin Way appears to be one of the, you know, especially that segment of Shastin Way seems to have one of the most severe slopes and lack of right-of-way. It just kind of disappears off the end very quickly. and lack of right-of-way. It just kind of disappears off the end very quickly. There are, you know, several properties on Shastan Way that aren't constrained, such as this property. There are also properties on immediate adjacent streets such as Dardanelle Vista and Navajo Drive that are the street right in front of Shastan Way and the street right behind Shastan Way that have properties that aren't constrained with such slope constraints. Furthermore, such streets such as Urock and Carrock Road are relatively flat with few constraints, and that's right there in the vicinity. Certainly, as you go towards Highway Four and are leaving Big Trees subdivision, it appears that the constraints get less and less and less, that the sites are much less constrained. So it's staff's contention that no matter how you define the word vicinity and properties in the zone, whether you took it from a total countywide perspective, whether you took it from, let's say, all properties that are within this same elevation and snow constraint, which I would contend is industry standard, or whether you took it all the way down to the street level at Big Trees, this site is constrained, and constrained more so than most properties in that immediate vicinity. So, I mean, there's literally a lot that's on Shastan Way that is behind this subject property because of the way the lot is situated, doesn't have the same constraint. So it's our contention that this site is constrained by the twenty-five percent slope, and that we're not giving them a special privilege. So their second comment is in regards to no denial of property privileges, and they state, "The parcel is already improved with a permitted home and detached garage that was previously granted a setback variance. All neighboring parcels function adequately with one garage or a compliant driveway configuration. A second nine hundred foot garage encroaching again to the three feet is an excessive departure from zoning intent and is not necessarily to enjoy the same reasonable use of the property as other owners do." So really, our response to that is that the appellant argues that there's no denial of property privileges because surrounding parcels function with only one garage or just a driveway. However, county code does not regulate the number of accessory structures, which includes garages. Neither do we really regulate the size of accessory structures as well. So it's number and size that we don't regulate. "The subject parcel is developed with a single unit dwelling, a main use in the R1 zone, and is not limited to the number of accessory structures." So if you have a primary structure in an R1 zone in Galliveras County, we are not telling you how many accessory structures that you may have. So their third comment is in regards to a grant of special privileges, and they state, "Approval of a second front setback reduction to zero feet for the same parcel would constitute a cumulative special privilege not granted to others." And so, you know, it's our view that, you know, granting a special privilege would be approved, a use or a structure not otherwise allowed in the zone, or granting a setback reduction on a parcel that could otherwise accommodate the structure. So we don't consider, you know, staff does not consider it a special privilege to say that you can have a second accessory structure. Their fourth comment is in regards to incompatibility with neighborhood character, and they state, "In a neighborhood usually characterized by woody, low-profile buildings set back behind groves of trees, this garage would be the second building directly up against the street and would be constructed of bright galvanized steel and a third building on a relatively small point three-two acre lot. Approving an over sixty foot long wall of buildings right along the street is not compatible at all with the aesthetic character of the neighborhood, surrounding land uses, and existing visual quality." You know, our general plan goal, LU dash four, is for, really, in our response, is in regards to well-designed development that is compatible with surrounding uses and is integrated with the community and the physical environment in which it is located. Garages are a customary use in the R1 zone, and staff found that a second garage would not be incompatible, as it would not produce noise, odors, dust, or other nuisances which may impact surrounding land uses. Incompatible uses in residential areas would be commercial, industrial, or large-scale agricultural uses. So it's our contention that because of the nature of the accessory use and not being a nuisance-producing use, that it's not incompatible with surrounding land uses because it's an accessory use in an R1 zone. And so that is our contention. Their fifth comment is in regards to unresolved site impacts and safety concerns. They state that the steep topography and proximity of the road raise additional concerns. Those concerns would be potential drainage and runoff impacts to neighboring properties, visibility and safety issues near the right-of-way during snow conditions, and lack of clarity regarding road embankment preservation and easement impacts. Our response to that really revolves around the fact that the Public Works Department imposed a condition of approval that an encroachment permit be obtained for any work within the county right-of-way, and did not raise any concerns regarding visibility and safety issues. Additionally, the applicant will be required to vacate any easements in the front setback, and all improvements must be constructed without disturbing the embankment. Drainage and runoff impact would be addressed at the building permit stage, as is standard practice. And so staff feels that the concerns are adequately addressed through the conditions of the variance permit and the building permit process. So things that we check when we get an application in, geotech report, all of that sort of things that we check at that stage. Their sixth and final comment is in regards to the impact of structure on the appellant's property. They state that the proposed structure towers over our residence at thirty-eight-point-five feet in height on top of a hill to the direct west of my property. Given that the sun sets in the west, the building will obstruct afternoon and evening sunlight, casting prolonged shadow over our home and significantly diminishing our natural light. The loss of light will adversely affect our property's habitability, aesthetic quality, and long-term value. The planning department's response in regards to that and impacts directly to the neighbor that's at the rear property line is that, you know, first and foremost, the appellant is incorrect in stating that the proposed structure is thirty-eight-point-five feet tall. According to the two-scale site plans submitted with the variance application, the east side of the proposed structure facing the appellant's property will be twenty-eight-point-five feet tall. The appellant agreed to shorten the depth of the proposed structure from forty feet to thirty feet. So they made it a thirty by forty to a thirty by thirty, reducing the height of the east face of the structure from its original height of thirty-two-point-five feet. So when they revised their plans, that backside elevation came down. The west side facing Shastan Way will be eighteen-point-five feet tall. So that street side would be eighteen-point-five. The height limit in the R1 zone is thirty-five feet high. So they don't need a variance for the height. They need a variance for the front setback. The height limit is thirty-five feet tall. You know, building height is measured from an average base elevation and to the highest point of the roof. How we calculate an average base elevation is that we take the lowest point on the ground and the elevation at the highest point of the ground, and then we take an average of that, and that establishes us that average baseline. And then you can have the height, allowed height above that baseline. So that's how we calculate it. It's an average of the high point and the low point. That's how we do a slope calculation for the base elevation. So the total height of the building is certainly for the appellant's property is twenty-eight-point-five feet tall. So the structure is within the allowed height. As far as impacts, and this came up at the Planning Commission, it was stated by, I believe, at least one planning commissioner, with their ability to, you know, if they wanted to, they could impact the neighbor on the rear property line far more than they are now. If they moved the garage back twenty feet to achieve the front setback, they would more than likely be able to achieve the height requirements, and the whole structure would be pushed back towards the rear property line and the appellant's property. So all they would need to do for that would be to pull a building permit. It would not be a discretionary action. Now, of course, that's not what the applicant proposed. Applicant originally wanted the zero foot setback, and then they agreed to the three foot setback. But if they are willing to pay to have the structure moved back, that would significantly impact that neighbor that's on the rear property line. It would get closer to them by twenty feet, and the height perspective would get much higher as far as perspective. So that really is the appellant's arguments and the planning department's responses. It's all in the package for you to review. I wanted to, you know, go over now, and we can certainly go over it again later, is what your options are today and the alternatives. And your first alternative is to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of variance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero nine permitting the construction of a nine hundred foot detached garage with three foot front setback, or approve the applicant's original request for a twelve hundred square foot with zero foot setback, or approve or further condition the project. So I'm certainly available for any questions. I know you want to have both parties speak, but I'm certainly available for any further questions. And like I said, if you want to see something pulled up on the screen, that's fine.
Thank you, Brett. At this time, do you have any advice, board members, wish to make any questions or comments? With that, I'll move on to the appellant. Ms. Engelen.
Good morning.
I'm Renee Engelen. This is my brother, Richard. I guess, at the end of the day, the three findings necessary to approve a variance, I still don't find those to be met. It seems very subjective. Neither one of the three allowable causes seem to have been met. And quite honestly, having them use or require the actual twenty-foot setback, although it would still have a negative impact on us, because of the slope, it wouldn't be a prison-like wall of structure going from essentially lot line to lot line. We're not the only ones in the neighborhood that oppose this. I have a handful of emails that were sent either directly to me or also copied to the Board of Supervisors from neighboring properties that are vehemently opposed to this project. It is not in character with Big Trees Village. It is out of scale. It's obtrusive. There's not one person that I spoke to from the neighborhood was in support of this project, despite what Mr. Winkler will claim, many of whom actually expressed concerns of even speaking publicly because he's known in the neighborhood as a bully who just sort of railroads things on people. I have a whole packet here. I don't know if I can share it with you, but it's... No, I did not. I'm sorry. And I'll let my brother speak to some of...
Thank you all very much for your time. I know that time is very precious. And yeah, I am speaking on behalf of the property that is on the east side that will be significantly environmentally impacted by the loss of sunlight. By the imposing nature of the structure reminds me of something that I saw as a kid in Berlin with the communist wall going around it. I don't want to overdramatize what we're talking about here, but that's essentially what we're talking about. In our neighborhood of Big Trees Village, the tradition and the custom of that village is that structures are built essentially with great consideration to neighbors on opposing lot lines, therefore granting as much space as possible between structures. No one wants to deny the Winklers a variance for a garage. They already have a variance for a garage, a big garage for a small cabin, and they want another commercial-grade garage that just isn't uncharacteristic for that neighborhood. I vehemently am opposed to this project. It would be a shame to see what we have seen for sixty years as a beautiful natural place be overdeveloped. It's a low-density environment, and this project would be quite opposed to that concept. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the applicant, Mr. Winkler.
Good morning, Chair members of the board. Thank you for your opportunity to speak today. My name is Rodden Winkler. I'm the applicant for the variance that addresses twenty-two forty-four Shastan Way and Dorrington. I'd like to briefly summarize why we are respectfully asking you to uphold the Planning Commission's approval of our variance. First, our property has a unique and significant hardship that has been fully documented by the planning staff. Our home was one of the very first homes built in Big Trees Village back around sixty-eight, long before modern zoning and fire standards. As a result, we are one of the only homes in the entire area with no usable off-street driveway parking. And I submitted a photograph to show the front of the house. In the winter, it is a hardship. You know, the county has to plow. They create large berms, and that's where the snow goes. So there really is no parking for us, unlike most of the properties that have quite a few additional parking spots. I also presented a little graph there that showed the amount of parking spots most houses have on the streets around us. Let's see. Yeah. As a result, we are one of the only homes in the entire area with no usable off-street driveway and no ability to construct one today due to the average downslope of the lot and the current code requirements. Due to the steepness, we can't even put a driveway in according to the fire department. Second, during winter, our entire driveway lies in the county right-of-way, where parking is prohibited. This leaves us with no lawful onsite parking for our family during snow season. The variance simply allows us to achieve a basic level of functionality that almost every home around us already enjoys. The average home on our surrounding streets has about seven parking places. We would have four, which is still below the neighborhood average. Third, reduced setbacks are common in an immediate area due to the topography. Two homes on our street, twenty-three twenty-four and twenty-one fifty-four Shastan Way, have garages at zero and two-and-a-half foot setback. Our request is consistent with the pattern and consistent with how the county has historically handled similar constrained laws. Fourth, we want to address neighborhood character. The applicant describes the area as consisting only of small, low-profile cabins, but that's not accurate. Our street has multiple large homes, including a five thousand square foot home, a four thousand one hundred square foot home, and a lot of different architectural designs compared to when Big Trees was first built. and a lot of different architectural designs compared to when Big Trees was first developed and it was small cabins. Now there's major full-size homes of all different architectural design. Our garage will be finished in natural tones, not galvanized steel, with matching green doors and stonework to match the existing garage. It blends in with the neighborhood and does not create a visual or aesthetic impact. All county departments, including the Public Works and the Fire District, reviewed and approved the variance. Public Works even came onsite and confirmed that there were or no access, visibility, or easement issues. A geotechnical review will be completed during the building permit process as required. We are committed to being compliant to the county. Finally, I'd like to address the point raised by the appellate regarding the garage being metal. Metal garages are fully permitted structures under Calaveras County ordinance and consistent with the general plan. In fact, there was a clear precedent. In the year two thousand and one, the board considered a nearly identical situation involving a twenty four hundred square foot metal garage at a reduced setback. Resolution zero one dash three two six, the board upheld that variance because it complied with the zoning code and the general plan. Our situation is entirely consistent with that precedent. At the end of the day, we are simply asking for the ability to use our property in the same basic way that nearly every other home around us already can. This variance helps us correct the longstanding hardship that dates back to when the home originally was constructed almost sixty years ago. We would like to have the opportunity to have friends and family and grandkids at our house in the winter when you have these large amount of volume of snow and berms. So the garage would, you know, make it possible to, you know, have Christmas and holidays and whatnot. Otherwise, there's nowhere for anywhere to park. So we respectfully ask that you uphold the planning commission's approval and deny the appeal. Thank you for your time and for your service to our community.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask if there are any comments, any public comment? Thank you, Mr. Winkler. Is there any further public comment? Is there any comment online?
There is no public comment online.
Thank you.
I retract that. Sorry.
I thought it was Craig.
Um, it's Ms. Winkler.
Okay.
Beth, you should be able to unmute now if you'd like to unmute and begin talking.
Okay, there we go. I would like to just add some further information that I just became aware with. So evidently Renee has mentioned, which you received some letters from some other neighbors. We are not, first of all, known as a neighborhood bully. We actually hosted many block parties and we help each other. We're very known in the community. So I I don't know where that's coming from, but but there was a letter sent out to the neighbors. And so I don't know what kind of responses you got back. So I just wanted to clarify some of the comments that were raised in this letter. So first of all, it says that there was going to be a meeting and it's for a proposal to build a second detached garage three feet away from the road. It's not three feet away from the road. It's three feet back from our property line, which puts it about twenty four feet from the road. So that's very, very misleading to these neighbors. And then furthermore, it talks about, you know, the aesthetic issues like Brett mentioned and Rodney mentioned. The building department is going to handle the next step where it gets into all the environmental issues. This is just the variance stage. So at that stage, that'll be handled by another department. And furthermore, when we built our other garage, it's been there since two thousand and seven. We haven't had any environmental problems. We're not expecting to have any, but that's that's another step. So it's unfortunate that this letter went out and it's it's misleading to our neighborhood is what I wanted to point out. And I just hope that you understand our situation. We bought this house. We figured a one garage would be enough, not knowing the amount of snow we get. And then only having two legal parking spots in the garage is just not enough for our friends and family. So I appreciate your your time and I just hope you go ahead and can listen to our concerns and deny this appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Winkler. I'd like to bring it back to the appellant. Ms. Englund, would you like to make any rebuttal?
Ms. Winkler did bring up about negative impacts and, you know, why not get CEQA? We we actually were, as being directly below. I know that they have developed at least their their first garage with the variance into also including living space. So although the footprint might be nine hundred square feet, it's effectively doubled that with the with the developed space underneath. I don't think there's been any consideration placed on septic loads. Ours actually flooded and had to be replaced this year, whether it's a cause of drainage or extra, you know, load. Their septic is sort of right above ours. I don't know, but why not get some CEQA involved, environmental impact reviews? And again, it's 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 just out of character with the the area. Other homes on the same street with the same grade are able to actually just have a cutout off of the street. It just comes in at an angle. It's a gentle slope. They've already set a precedent of being able to drive on that because as you look at my packet, you can see there are tire marks where they have driven vehicles from Chastan Way across our property onto a lot they own on Navajo Drive, right adjacent to ours. So to get from one lot to the other, they have to effectively drive across our lot to do that. And so it's it, they've already set a precedent that they can absolutely, the the grade is acceptable to drive down and be set away from the street and actually have the setbacks required under under the current code and not require a variance. I don't know if you want to add anything more to that.
Thank you. Mr. Winkler, I'd like to give you the opportunity for rebuttal if you'd like.
Sure. Thank you very much. As far as the septic goes, we engaged with a septic company, had them come out and do a full report, which I included, and we can send another copy if need be. But everything tested out fine. There were no problems. Our septic isn't peaching on anybody's property or causing any problems whatsoever. The report showed that it was a hundred percent compliant. So that's that's not an issue at all. As far as the tire marks, the work that I've had to perform on the property was removing trees due to the bark beetle situation. And my contractor did all the work from Chastan down. The tire marks that she has seen on the property is from when they had a tree taken down. It was same situation. There was a problem. And they accessed the property from the bottom. It was not my contractors. I could get a letter to that point if we need it, but we don't drive over their property. The only property I drive on is my own property. So so and most of the time it's the contractor. It's not. And as far as having a driveway to go down to get into a garage, it's according to the fire department, it's you can't do that anymore. That's sixty years ago, they allowed that, but no longer. So because of the steepness, they wouldn't be able to get emergency equipment in and whatnot. So that's why we're asking for the variance to get it in a proper location for safety and, you know, make it ease of access. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
No, that's it. Thank you. I'll bring it back to Mr. Sampson. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I I just, there was a comment regards to CEQA. We did conduct a CEQA review for this action. A variance is a discretionary action and it is subject to CEQA. Accessory structures are categorically exempt under CEQA. So no further analysis past that is necessary or required or or really would be, you know, it it would be, we'd be inventing, you know, new types of CEQA to do that. So accessory structures such as garages, pools, decks, fences, things like that are typically categorically exempt under CEQA as an accessory structure. So I would just state that.
Thank you. I'd like to give the public one more chance to make a comment.
We're Michael and Tina Calvert. We live on Navajo, so we're sort of below and off to one side. I believe for myself, my main concern is just it's out of character for the area. I also have been there well over fifty years and I realize things have changed. Houses have gotten bigger, but this particular structure seems very out of character for the whole area. Being that they already have one nice garage, I I personally have no garage. We did consider one at one point, but we felt it would be not good for the house across the street from us or the house next door. We evaluated it from both of their sides and decided not to do it. But I mean, that's just our personal thing. But just overall, it doesn't fit with the area. And I'm concerned that if we kick this door open, the next thing we're going to have everywhere are these gigantic storage structures. I mean, it's basically going to be like a storage facility. So I mean, that that's just my concern.
The other concern that we have is the effect on the property values surrounding that structure. Because it is not in line with all of the other structures around there, that it puts undue stress on the ability to sell those homes because of what the view is. It's not the nice view of the trees and the mountains and Chastan is set up a ways. So there's a beautiful view almost all the way up to Bear Valley. So to to put something like that there would really impact the aesthetics of that particular piece of property and the the surrounding properties for the one below, the one next to. And and I don't know if this is the proper time. There's the the neighbor next door, Mr. Jim Reynolds, indicated to me that he had submitted a letter to you that he would have liked to have had read during this. I don't know if that's proper or.
It would have had to cut through the clerk's office.
Yeah.
He said he mailed it.
Yeah, he emailed it in. I know I, he's emailed it to me, but I couldn't find it yet this morning, but he said he's already sent it.
All timely comments or letters that got submitted to the board will be included in the record of this hearing.
That's what he was hoping.
Yeah, that's what he's hoping for. Yeah. We do appreciate it. We've talked to just about all the neighbors. I haven't heard of one that's that is in support of this project. So, you know, like I said, we don't have a garage. We have a flat parking area, not a driveway. We have no driveway. So.
It works.
It works.
And we're there in the snow.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Shovel, you know, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, good morning. My name is Karen Figuera. My husband, Nick Figuera, we actually do live on Chastan Way. We live about four houses down from the Winklers. I truly wish that we would have been told many, many months ago regarding what the plans were for this structure. That did not happen. We received a letter last week from Renee Engle.
Engle.
Thank you. And I was floored. I believe we both were. Our community, as Michael Calvert stated, is very tree-lined. The houses fit in. Yes, there are people who don't have garages. They were not part of the original. Some people have had them added, but they are nice garages. Our home was actually with the plan of having our double car garage with the house. That was what we wanted when we were looking up in the area. And we fell in love with Dorrington. This massive metal structure would completely compromise and diminish what we have in our area. And I'm not talking about just Chastan, Dardenell Vista, Navajo. It would be the entire Big Trees Village. As Tina Calvert stated, you do open the door for more of this.
Essentially, you know, we are echoing their concerns.
Yeah.
And my concern would be the precedent, you know, for establishing, like Michael said, about other people in the area being able to do something similar to that. And that's the concern that I have. So.
I probably speak for a lot of people who cannot be here today. But this is not something we believe would be a good fit. I could say probably a little bit more, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the board for discussion, but I'd I'd like to lead this discussion was with a question for Brett. And that is, how did this come to us? Where is the homeowners association in all of this? Because ultimately, as I look at this, Mr. Winkler is allowed by right to have this. All of the, all of the conditions as far as what it's made out of and how it looks and what have you really should be up to the HOA, in my opinion. This came from a discussion that I had with Supervisor Follendorf yesterday, which she pointed out, and why is this coming to us in government now when these are issues? And quite honestly, the way that I see it right now is that Mr. Winkler is allowed by right to do what he's doing and he's doing it all properly. And the county has signed off on all of this. And I feel badly for the neighbors, but my feeling is that the neighbors should really take this to their homeowners association and say, if this has happened, we need to step up now and say what the rest of the community is going to look like. I did spend time, I'm sorry, Mr. Winkler, you're done. I did spend time this weekend. I drove up to Mr. Winkler's. I drove around the, I I'm very familiar with the the area and they're beautiful homes. And and I was impressed by Mr. Winkler's home. It is incredibly neat and tidy. I understand what he's trying to do. And I I believe that he has the right to do it. And and by virtue of what the county has said, what have you, I I believe he has the right to 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 this variance and I'd like to see him get it. But I'd like to bring it back to the board for more comments as well.
I'd like to follow up with Martin's comments. And during the research after our conversation yesterday, my understanding is the CCNR expired in twenty twenty six, in twenty sixteen. There are no CCNR for regulations, which then means it come to us and it falls under county code. Correct? So am I misinterpreting that?
It it would, it would come to you in any regards in 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 regards to our zoning code. And so our zoning code, you know, surplants really anything else. In this case, it's really good points about the property owners association that's there. We are required to take input from the properties association. And this did go through a design review with the Big Trees Village Property Owners Association. And they have an approved design. Design review for a uh metal garage that is tan with a green door. That was approved on April twenty first, twenty twenty five. And so that's one of our regulatory steps that we go through to ta- to take input. Um, I still believe that the planning commission could have approved it. Let's say the design review, let's say the properties owners association objected or something like that. That would be more of a civil matter with their CCNRs if they had some, and so that would be purely a civil issue. But in this case, we do take input from any kind of recognized property owners association or HOA. And they do have an approved design review from them.
Okay, so it went through the proper channels within their own community before it got.
Both. A substead is their their private community, and then it gets to us, and we use that as input.
Okay, um, I just wanna, you know, going back to Martin, you know, um, dealing with other HOAs, especially in my district. It goes through a rigorous process, but during the research, there is no CCNRs. So we we are basing everything off of county code.
Correct, even if, but even if there were CCNRs, that would be literally, uh, in my belief in county council, can correct me if I'm wrong, but a separate. Civil issue.
Yes.
So separate and apart, but yet yet both apply.
Yes, I do. I'm re- reiterating it. I'm reiterating it to make sure that we. Are going through all the steps and to clarify that um. It to Martin's point, it could have been handled in-house had there been CCNRs before it even got to the Board of Supervisors. So now my, well, my response on it is based off of that, I went through. Um, county code and zoning and just as Supervisor Hubbard has said. This is by right. If there had been another property owner two streets over. We wouldn't even be in this situation. The only reason we're here is because of a simple variance. Because if it even being less than the twelve hundred square feet. Anyone in an R one zone in this county, if they're not in a CCNR regulation, they can put. Put a building up regardless. So i- it's by right. They they have that right. So the only reason we're here is because of variance and the consideration of a variance. All the other stuff, um, there's a civil suit, there's a neighbors between neighbors. And based on um all what I've read and conversations with um. Staff, um, I am in the same um thought process of um Supervisor Hubbard. It is within right. The only thing we're deciding is a variance, and I don't see. Um, we've done that variance options in other parts of the county. Um, we've already set precedent in. In um considering these type of variants when people are coming and. I'm glad to see that they reduced the footside to accommodate the planning commission and um I'm. I don't see an an issue. Um, I'm satisfied with. What is been presented from staff and the planning commission.
The. Oh yeah, just just briefly to clarify, um, that's correct. Uh, we don't regulate the number of accessory structures that can be constructed. Um, we also don't, you know, for better or worse, county code does not have design or aesthetic standards that would apply in this area. So you're absolutely correct. To the extent there are any of those standards, that would be something that the HOA um. Could or would enforce. I don't know, and we don't have an evidence in front of us, you know, whether they have binding CCNRs or anything like that, but as Mr. Sampson pointed out, that would be a civil. Matter for the property owners association to deal with. Um, and you're correct Supervisor Follendorf, this is. Purely um because they are looking to build within the setback and looking for a variance from those setback requirements. Otherwise. Uh, we wouldn't be here because they would just purely have the ability to do this by right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stopper?
Um, I I completely agree here what we both have to say coming from a. Uh, community that. Rancho Calaveras has defunct CCNRs in a way that are hard for them to enforce and um. That's partially. The responsibility of the people that live within the community to keep those up to date and enforceable through. As you've explained, you know, the court, not the county. Um, and, you know, by right. We do allow this type of variance, especially, I mean, a twenty five percent grade is. Pretty darn good. I mean, we we you discussed earlier that, you know, they wouldn't let people build on it now. If there was a driveway, um, if my house were to burn down. The state's laws when it comes to fire code would not let me rebuild my house on the same property, devoting my property at this time. So. Um, that that'd be, I I understand the twenty five percent. Uh. There's one point that was made. I lived up in Lake Tahoe for over six years solid and. You know, you move somewhere and you're not prepared to shovel snow to make some parking spots, then you're in the wrong spot. But uh, that's beside the point, that that that, you know, you cannot shovel by right also. So with that. Ver- very, very solid points to how how things are going forward. I agree with my colleagues. Uh, to to those points, um, barring here anything else, you know. Um, I'm making my decision now, so.
Any other comments? Supervisor Toffnall?
Yeah, I I understand where the neighbors are coming from. Um, unfortunately, with your HOA the way it is. Um, that would have been the way to go. Um, but unfortunately, it's not. Um, we don't enforce any of that, whether it's gone, you let it lapse or whatever. Uh, the variance is a common thing, uh, so we're not doing anything out of the norm. I can't go back and say, well, we we don't do this. Um, so it 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 is common. I I would just ask that the property owner would at least consider. Um, some variance on the building itself, concerned with all the neighbors and their concerns. And try and be a good neighbor. Um, he says for parking, but obviously it's not just for parking. It's a big building. You you're gonna put a lot of stuff in there. Um, I don't know what the whole thing is, but if you're just gonna have parking. It would just be a pad. That's the parking. Um, so I don't really agree with what you're saying on that part of it. Um, but I it seems like he has the right to build it. Um, there's nothing we can do about that because that's exactly what it will be coming to the building department. And planning department, uh, once he gets the construction drawings done. And so there'll be some reviews there on it, and whether it's conforms to our county codes or not. Um, it will have to do that county codes, but um, right now. Everything that I'm seeing is is within the codes that that are within the county, so.
Any further comments? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, I would like just to say one last thing, and and I would love to work with you and 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 working with the HOA and going going forward. Uh, with this. But living in Calaveras County, it's all about community, and I think what makes me saddest about this whole situation is that you all used to be friends. And I don't know what we can do to rectify that, but Calaveras is about community and getting along with your neighbors, and your neighbors are your biggest asset. Beyond your family and friends. So um, with that, I'll bring it to the board and ask for a motion.
Um. You said something about friends and community. I want to address before making a motion, Martin. Um. You know, it's a lot of communities I've lived in here, so we take care of our own. It's a double edged blade. Sometimes taking care of your own is riding them. But uh, your 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 uh path for riding the situation with CCNRs and your HOA uh has. You know, lapsed in two thousand sixteen. So uh. That that said, I'll make a motion to uphold the planning commission's. Um, approval of the variance.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I.
Passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just take a two minute break.
Okay, we're back. Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, we read item number nineteen, please.
Item nineteen is a resolution from Human Resources, adopt resolution appointing Assistant Auditor Controller Greg Sessions to fulfill to fulfill the remaining term of the vacant position of the Calaveras County Auditor Controller.
Ms. Hawkins.
Good morning, Chair Hubbard and members of the board. So October eighth of this year, our auditor controller Kathy Gomes let everybody know that she was retiring and that her last day would be November fourteenth. So since we had an assistant auditor, the assistant took on the duties while we brought this item to you. And so now the board, the board may make an appointment based on recommendations of the auditor controller and our executive, our county executive officer. They both strongly recommend that Greg Sessions be appointed. He has been in the position of the assistant for several years now. He's been managing staff, all of the financial pieces to that job. The executive office, HR, everybody has had a really good, strong working relationship with Mr. Sessions. So the second option is to direct an internal recruitment and do public interviews or direct an external recruitment and do public interviews. So this is, is up to the board. We strongly recommend Mr. Sessions for the position. And besides having his years here, he started off as an auditor controller, moved up from a one to a two, and then became an assistant auditor controller. So like I said, we strongly recommend Mr. Sessions.
Thank you. Is there any forward comment? Can I press top note?
Not until I hear Greg speak. Maybe after I hear him speak.
Well, thank you for the consideration for this and thank you for the time to address you. I appreciate very much the work that you do. And by way of acknowledgement, I'd like to once again thank my predecessor for putting me in this position and helping me develop the skills where I can confidently stand before you and, and hopefully accept an appointment for the rest of this term. By way of other thankfulness, I'd like to thank especially my son, who is here with me for his support, both in my work and in relocating to the county several years back in order to pursue this, this opportunity. I'd like to thank my staff that's also here in support. They are an incredible group of individuals, very skilled, very dedicated. In my hope for where we go from here, they will be integral. I started my career in the public sector as a controller, as a CFO, working small businesses. And one thing that we always focused on was value added. You know, what does it do to the bottom line? Can we maximize revenues? Can we, you know, curb costs, you know, those types of things? In our department, we are part of the general fund. The value that we will bring will not show on a financial statement or the bottom line. So I'm looking at ways that we can use our experience, use our expertise as a team to better the fiscal staff around the county. Work more closely with other departments to bring forward different aspects of the county strategic plan. Not everybody I've learned in my career is a numbers person. You know, I've, I've helped manage a company where my boss's idea of a financial statement was a handwritten napkin. You know, I having the skill set that we possess is we're not expecting everyone to be an accountant, but we are here to raise up the level of our, of our fiscal support, work with other departments, work with special, special districts. I really appreciate, I didn't know this until today. I found out that a number of the fire chiefs called and made, you know, expressed their support for my appointment. I, I very much appreciate that. And, and I've reached out to them to, you know, include them in our, our future fiscal trainings and things like that. I just, I want the value that me and my department bring to the county and to the people of Calaveras to be noticeable, to be apparent when you're looking at, you know, even the future, if, you know, times get tough, if we need to make budget cuts, looking at my department and saying, they bring value. And that, that's kind of what I hope to bring. That's what I hope to do. I am open to any questions or comments, and I thank you again very much for this opportunity.
I did, I did hear him speak. And he didn't bring up anything about, are, are we current with all our bills? Have you paid all our bills currently?
No.
Okay, fine. If you are, then I'm okay with it.
I can say that we have had no interruption of payments or services in the transition from Kathy to myself as interim. So that has gone very smoothly and, and we will continue to remain current.
Good. That was my question.
Is there any other public comment regarding this item? Is there any comment online? What about son?
I, I will move this item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Um, with that, you know, um, good to have you. If the rest of the board votes this way, great. So with that, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Good to have you.
Congratulations.
We're going to swear you in now. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah. And we will be doing this.
Greg, this is the part where they say without hesitation. That you say without hesitation.
And, and from here on is after you do that, it's all on your shoulders. You can't say I'm interim anymore.
Right. Oh.
You gotta think about these words you're about to say. They're serious.
Don't we just do it right here?
Just notify that Ms. Turner will do it in the office. She's not coming here. Okay.
That's gonna be like the highlight of our whole meeting.
I know.
Okay.
That's how I made it work.
Okay.
Yeah, let's wait.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yes.
All righty then. Another one minute, right?
Greg, come on in.
Some more brownies to drop crumbs on Gary's lap.
I could tell you if you don't use that. Okay.
How, how long will she be?
Just a few minutes.
I will wait, I'll wait.
See, wait. A few minutes is almost enough time for a lady to use the facilities.
Wait a minute, I'm just looking at seeing if I can see her. If anybody does need to use the restroom, that will be the time.
Or run out the back. We need Jeopardy music going.
There she is. She looks like she's coming with an entourage.
Big deal.
No, she's there. No, it's alone. The entourage went the other way.
Yes. Okay.
Come on up.
I guess I didn't pick up what was happening here.
Oh, this. Yes.
Yes, we are. One brownie.
But gay can be.
Oh, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Come on up. Your shoulders.
Hold my swearing hand up.
Right, ready?
I need to swear.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Greg Sessions.
I, Greg Sessions.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Well, there you go. Congratulations.
Well done, Greg.
Thank you. Swinging. Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, man. Awesome. Thank you, Becky. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Do we need to sign it?
Sorry.
This is, this is the picture board. Wait a minute. This is for the slides. Sign here.
Well done.
We go.
Right. We'll move on now to item number twenty.
Item number twenty is an action item from Human Resources. Number one, introduce a way first reading of an ordinance adding chapter two dot zero five to the Calaveras County Code, adopting a formula for future Board of Supervisors compensation adjustments, and two, authorize a summary publication of the ordinance.
Ms. Hawkins.
Morning, Chair Hubbard. I am bringing before you a recommendation for an ordinance that will allow a review and adjustment of board salaries. We had discussed this originally when we had brought forward some recommendations from Evergreen. And this is, we took Evergreen's recommendation. Sarah helped me put it into ordinance form, and so now we are bringing this forward. We have not changed the formula that we recommended, that Evergreen brought forward. It is the same, the same process. And so what we are requesting for you to approve today, or the first reading, is annually, so around the February timeframe, we will go out, gather all of the data regarding here counties that we have listed in the policy, and gather all of their data as well as increases that the Supreme Court or the court justices have received. And then, and then the CPI, and then we take that information, and then we take forty percent of the annual CPI, forty percent of what the salaries of your peer peers are, and then twenty percent of the superior court judges. And then we, we make a recommendation, if the amount is higher, then we will put through increases. We will not increase salaries more than three point five percent. And so this is an automatic adjustment that's done annually. If there, in some cases, like right now, if we were to do this math, there would not be an increase. So there are years that there may not be an increase. Some there may with a max of three point five percent. So we always know that it's not going to be more than three point five percent. And by doing this, then we don't have to keep coming back and having these hard discussions. We know that it's not easy for boards to vote on their own salaries. It does, it, it's a tough situation for you to be in, but unfortunately, government code states that you have to. So this is an opportunity to keep salaries equitable. And so, and then also it, it's something that will be included with our budget every year. So it's something that will be in the budget. It's just like I said, it's an automatic process. In years that we do have serious economic downturns, we can bring in ordinance forward to your board to suspend it for the timeframe that we have difficult times. Sir, can I answer questions? I'm sure there are many.
More questions?
No.
Is there any public comment regarding this? Is there any comment online? Then I'll bring it back to the board.
So moved.
Five a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
Nope.
We want to item number twenty one.
Item number twenty one is a resolution from Human Resources, adopt resolution establishing the elected officials compensation adjustment policy, a framework for the annual review and adjustment of salaries for the assessor, auditor controller, county clerk recorder, district attorney, sheriff, and treasurer, tax collector effective November twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
Hawkins.
Morning. So this is, we are bringing before you a resolution setting a policy to be able to annually review and adjust the, the salaries of all of the other elected officials other than the board supervisors. And so this formula is a little bit different than what we did with the Board of Supervisors. We are looking at comparative markets. We are gathering the information from the counties as listed in the policy, and then we're taking fifty percent of what they're making, and then we're taking fifty percent of our internal comparisons, so that we're making sure that we're staying competitive, we're staying at the median of our market counties, and then our comparable positions within this county. And then these are automatic adjustments. And then, of course, if we are in economic downturned times, then we will bring something before the board, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to flinch anytime somebody says median now, I go.
The average, the average of our, and then we're also making sure that we stay within, we're not getting ten percent above and we're not getting ten percent below, so.
No coffee involved.
No coffee.
There's no coffee.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's a pretty concrete ordinance, I accept.
So are there any questions from the board? Oh, you're liked on?
I turned it on just so I could talk about concrete.
Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Is there any comment online? Then I'll bring it back to the board for motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to item number twenty two.
Item number twenty two is informational item from Agriculture Department, receive an informational presentation on department overview programs and funding by the Department of Agriculture, Weights, and Measures.
Jesse, do you need a moment to set up? Are you?
You guys want to take a quick break?
Oh, one minute. Well, I'm gonna have to grab some more brownies, Gary. No, I'm done with brownies. Wait a minute, yeah, yeah. Fever or tiger food on?
They're, they're, they're rats. There's some mice.
We matched the show.
Robin, did you read the item already?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Ms. Fowler.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, there we go. All right. Good morning, Chair Hubbard, Honorable Members of the Board, Jess Fowler, Agricultural Commissioner and Director of Weights and Measures. I'm here today to give an overview of my department. It's been almost two years since the last presentation. I want to take a moment to refresh the board and community as to what programs we oversee and how staff licensing, contracts, and subvention funds shape our department. After, I'll give a brief update on long-term trends and how they will alter the needs of our department in years to come. Reading this because I had timed this presentation and found I could easily ramble on for well over an hour. So for the sake of everyone here today and your time, I've created a script to read, so I don't wax poetic about agriculture waste measures, and I stay on time. Sure you'll appreciate that. Also, I did find a few small typos in this presentation since submitting it, but please excuse them. They don't detract from the overall information conveyed. Just move on from that one too. All right. Why is our department structured as it is? Regulations like the California Food and Agricultural Code define our department's programs and staffing requirements. The California Food and Agricultural Code requires that each county not only has a Department of Agriculture, but that the department is under the control of an agricultural commissioner who is appointed by the board. The system is by no means new. In California, agricultural commissioners, then called horticultural commissioners, have been in place since eighteen eighty one. That means we've been around a hundred and ten years longer than the California Department of Pesticide Regulation. Thirty-eight years longer than the California Department of Food and Agriculture, or C D F A, and twenty years longer than the very first pesticide law in California. In nineteen fifteen, counties were additionally mandated to have a Director of Weights and Measures, which is also In nineteen fifteen, counties were additionally mandated to have a Director of Weights and Measures, which is also known as a sealer. Commissioners and sealers statewide are represented by and a part of the California Agricultural Commissioner and Sealers Association, quite a mouthful, so CACASA. And California is unique in the nation, whereas every other state's agricultural commissioner is an elected position that has jurisdiction over the entire state, much like a governor. In California, every county has a Department of Agriculture overseen by an agricultural commissioner and sealer. This system allows agricultural commissioners and sealers to live close to where they work and better understand the unique needs and the environment and community that they regulate. I thought you would find it interesting to see the previous Calaveras County Commissioners and Sealers that I found record of. This list goes back to nineteen fourteen and has only seven appointed incumbents before my own appointment. I believe that small number is a testament to the dedication and the passion of each licensed official who has held the office. We work hard to inform, protect, and support our community. What you do? Okay. So what do we do over at the Ag Department? We are the regulatory agency that acts as boots on the ground for our federal and state partners while working with local partners to enforce federal, state, and local regulatory code. Here you can see how regulatory authority moves from the federal level down to county level. Agriculture departments have enforcement authority under the California Food and Agricultural Code, California Code of Regulations, and the California Business and Professions Code. And here we all are, California County Agricultural Commissioners and Sealers, fifty-one of the fifty-six anyway. And yeah, I am in there, and yeah, again, I'm hiding the back of the other introverts, so good luck, good luck finding me. Across the state, what are all of our offices working so hard to do? We want to help agriculture thrive while protecting people, animals, and the environment. We stand for fairness in the marketplace, so everyone can feel confident they're getting what they paid for. Where does our department fit in Calaveras County? Well, as you can see, we're under the umbrella and the Environmental Management Agency and its administrator, Lisa Medina, who's in the back supporting me. Thank you, Lisa. Our community, or you can go to the next one. Oh, you're there. Okay, no, you're there. Okay. Our department currently has five full-time permanent staff plus a brand-new extra hire office technician who we are delighted to have on board because she's really helping us out. Our staff works diligently to connect with our community stakeholders. Here you see I am the ex officio or a liaison member of the Ag Advisory Committee, Fish and Game Commission, and the Hardwood Advisory Committee. Additionally, I'm the liaison and our point of contact for the Catalans Association, the Farm Bureau, the Resource Conservation District, and the Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance. These are the other outreach activities my staff and/or I participated in or will participate in for twenty twenty-five. With fifteen listed events, we keep an active role. We are always excited to participate in outreach opportunities for the public, be they fourth graders to senior citizens, because nobody knows what we do, and that's why I'm here today. We advocate for the county and for funding through state and federal partners and policymakers in order to support our programs and protect our citizens. This allows our staff to share the good work and resources our department offers. Here are our programs. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the incredible work of our inspector staff. They work quietly behind the scenes, performing a very important role in each of these programs. There are thirteen mandated and two non-mandated programs listed. I'm going to briefly cover what each program does and encourage anyone interested to learn more to reach out to our department. Pest prevention is the first line of defense to keep non-native destructive species, pests, from permanently establishing in Calaveras County. What is the pest species? It can be a plant, an animal, insect, or a pathogen. For instance, an example of an invasive species that has naturalized to the point we can no longer eradicate it and only control it is the yellow star thistle, that Gregory plant that has the spikes under the yellow flowers that poke you when you walk by and can outcompete all other plants to form a monoculture in a field. It is important to keep these invasive species out of California and our county as they outcompete native species, are destructive to agricultural commodities, natural resources, and ornamental landscaping. Keeping them out starts at the borders of California. The U.S. Customs and CDFA Border Protection Station inspectors work to check all incoming shipments for agricultural products, from bins of agricultural fruits and nuts, as you may imagine, but things you also might not, like smuggled birds, dehydrated pork products, animal pelts and bones, decorative dried grass mats, to even the wood pallets and the very containers all products are delivered in, all to check for potential hitchhiking pests. Our department also checks all incoming agricultural products for hitchhiking pests. That includes things like commercial honeybee shipments. Here, our ag biologist technician Steve is checking incoming beehives to ensure that that hive is healthy and there are no injurious species hiding in or on the hive. By the thumbs up, hive must be healthy. I've also included some revenue numbers to reflect funding for these programs. For pest exclusion work, we receive a contract agreement for almost twenty-four thousand dollars from CDFA. This funding helps reimburse the time and supplies in twenty-two, twenty-four to inspect sixty nursery shipments and ensure that the plants being sold were healthy and invasive species free. Also, this ensured that there were no hitchhiking pests in the thirty-five hundred packages that we profiled and opened at a local shipment center. Hitchhiking pests are the number one way for invasive species to be introduced. It's something few of us think about when we travel across the country or across the globe and decide to bring back a fruit or other commodity we can't get back home as a souvenir to eat or to share. Likewise, well-meaning small businesses, families, or friends will pack up agricultural products like fruit grown in their backyard and ship it across the state, the country, and the world, all without knowing there's a detrimental species catching a free ride inside. That brings us to our second line of defense, pest detection. You may have seen some of our strange-looking traps placed around the county. These traps are designed to attract specific, non-native invasive pests not currently established in California that are injurious to agricultural commodities, native species, and ornamental plants. Here we have a Japanese beetle trap, a glasswing sharpshooter trap, and a spongy moth trap. Each of the insects we trap for would severely impact crops and plants, creating a hardship for the grower, rancher, and increasing the cost to the consumer in stores. Although we thankfully haven't found these invasive insects locally, we need to keep vigilant. Sacramento and Placer Counties are actively trying to eliminate a small population of Japanese beetle that they have found through their own pest detection programs, while El Dorado and Stanislaus Counties are actively trying to eliminate a small population of glasswing sharpshooters within their borders. It should be no surprise, then, that our own department spent almost eleven percent of total staff time in this program for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. Fortunately, as no degree or state license is required to perform this work, we had our lower-cost extra hires cover the program work, freeing up our permanent specialized staff to work in programs that do require state licensing. On the left is a invasive Japanese beetle versus the larger native green june beetle or fig eater beetle. These call California home, and as you can see, there's a very clear difference. The right has images of the oriental fruit fly, which does not call California home, and we don't want it here. This slide is to show not only what a few of the invasive insects we trap for look like, but to touch on the economic damage they could incur if they were established. California's varied climates are so well-suited to agriculture that we grow over four hundred different agricultural commodities here, four hundred. California is an agricultural powerhouse. We produce twenty percent of all dairy for the United States. Nearly half of the nation's vegetables and more than three-quarters of the nation's fruits and nuts are grown in California. That means if you eat broccoli in Maine or Massachusetts or any other state, there's a fifty percent chance it was grown in California. If you eat a peach, that chance grows to seventy-five percent. Some crops, like artichokes, olives, walnuts, almonds, or figs, doesn't matter where you are outside of California, there is a ninety-nine percent chance that produce was grown right here. And speaking of almonds, eighty percent of the global and is in the entire world's popular, supply of almonds originates right here in the orchards of California. Perhaps then it won't be surprising to hear that in twenty twenty-four, California farmers and ranchers had over sixty-one point two billion, with a B, dollars in gross cash receipts. The estimated loss from invasive fruit fly establishment alone is twenty billion dollars. That's nearly a third of all current agriculture's value. These insects might be small, but we take them very seriously. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, we received agreements totaling over forty-eight thousand dollars for pest detection work. We placed five hundred and twenty-four insect-specific traps and checked them four thousand four hundred and fifty-one times, ensuring we keep invasive insects out of Calaveras. If anyone sees a strange plant, animal, or insect they don't think belongs here, please reach out to our department and we'll help you identify it. This photo is a spotted lantern fly. I add it, it is very unique-looking and easier to identify. It's originally from Asian, has become naturalized on the east coast and slowly spreading westward. It can feed on many different plants and trees, most notably grapevines. Its voracious feeding can lead to loss of the crop and death of the vine. If you think you see one, please contact us. As I mentioned earlier in our pest exclusion work, our department has regulatory authority over apiary or honeybee beehives when it comes to movement in the county, registration, and complaints. We want to ensure that bees are healthy and properly cared for. Next up is our pest management and eradication programs. Pest eradication and management programs are centered on invasive species that have a foothold in our county but are still small enough populations to be controlled, if not fully eradicated. In Calaveras, our established species of concern happen to all be non-native weeds like the distaff thistle, spotted knappweed, and tall white top or perennial pepper cress that are pictured here. Again, if you have a new vigorous plant growing in your pasture or yard, our department can help you identify it. If you would like to do more to prevent invasive weeds from calling Calaveras home, residents, businesses, and agency partners alike are welcome to join the Central Sierra Partnership Against Weeds, a weed management area group our department is a part of. Members meet quarterly and perform outreach activities to educate the public. Beyond this, our staff performs surveillance around the county between spring and fall, when plants are germinated, germinating, and growing, to look for new invasive weed sites while checking the status of historic ones. We have a four-year grant with CDFA totaling almost ninety-eight thousand dollars specifically for invasive weed work. Nursery stock coming into or leaving our county must meet certain cleanliness standards. To meet these standards, our inspectors visit county nurseries that are producing plants to sell both in and out of county. We also check seed shipments coming into or leaving the county to ensure that they might meet regulatory standards. We receive a nominal amount of money from CDFA, as we do not have many plant- or seed-producing nurseries in the county. Several of our smaller programs, not importance-wise, but time-spent in them-wise, fall under food quality control. Direct marketing. A way to celebrate our local food production and to meet the people who grow our food is through our certified farmers' markets. Agricultural producers located within the certified section of the farmers' markets are certified by their origin county agriculture departments. To become certified and receive a certified producer certificate, site visits are conducted by our staff or their counterparts in other counties to verify that the producer is growing what they are selling. These certified producer certificates must be displayed in farmers' market stalls. We have a nineteen hundred and forty-dollar contract with CDFA for farmers' market inspections and performs seventeen inspections in twenty twenty-four. Okay, this one, do a quick overview. So standardization program ensures that certain agricultural commodities are packed in the right container, at the right size, the right color, the right rightness. This is a complaint-based program, includes egg standardization. Organics, so for the organic program, that requires our inspectors to travel to production sites and ensure only allowed substances have been used on or around those organic crops. Per Food and Agricultural Code Section twenty-two seventy-nine, our department must produce an annual report that is a snapshot of what and how much of an agricultural commodity is grown in the county. This report is created and submitted to the Secretary of the California Department of Food and Agriculture. Due to late harvests and certain ag commodities, in addition to lengthy data compilation times, we typically don't release an annual report until later the next year. These reports are instrumental to know the average price and quantity of an agriculture commodity in Calaveras in the event of a disaster like the hard freeze we had a few years ago. This allows our department to determine how severely an industry was hit and if a disaster declaration should be requested. If declared, the producers affected are given access to low-interest rate loans and could be recipients of future potential federal or state grant monies related to the disaster. The pesticide use enforcement program is one of our two largest programs. The term pesticide is an umbrella term meant to encompass anything that prevents, destroys, repels, or mitigates any pest. Pesticides therefore include household materials, landscape, structural, and agricultural materials. We regulate all pesticide use and misuse. Whenever someone is exposed to a potential pesticide and goes to a hospital, we receive a doctor's first report. From there, we initiate an investigation to find out what happened. You might be surprised to learn that antimicrobial exposures like bleach used to kill mildew around your sink are the majority of the pesticide exposure incidents we receive. This is why the most important interaction we have concerning pesticides is outreach and education. Revenue received from this program includes mill tax monies. The first time a pesticide is sold in California, mill taxes levied. These monies are put aside and later dispersed according to the number and the types of pesticide activities taking place in a county. In April of twenty twenty-five, we received ninety-five thousand dollars from these mill taxes to support this program. Weights and Measures was our largest program last fiscal year, and it accounted for almost thirty-five percent of all staff time. That is no surprise, as we are mandated by Business and Professions Code to test any commercial device that weighs, measures, or counts to ensure accuracy. Our inspectors work to protect consumers from negligent and fraudulent activities. Because of our inspectors' work, consumers and businesses alike share a confidence in the marketplace with the knowledge that the scales used to weigh our produce and the meters used to dispense our vehicle fuel are all accurate. For example, beyond our local borders, recent statewide actions include a July settlement with Walmart for five point five million dollars for charging more than the advertised price, and a September settlement with Lowe's Home Centers for just over a million dollars, again, for charging more than the advertised price. Although Calaveras doesn't have either store in our borders, we do benefit by the side-pray monies, monies that cannot be returned to each customer who was overcharged, as we don't know their identities. So the money is placed in a trust fund for use to protect all Californians through Weights and Measures projects. These are all the subprograms within Weights and Measures. Clearly, there are a lot, and I don't have time to delve into them today. However, I do want to emphasize the importance of this program in that it touches our lives far more than we realize. This is a screenshot and a thirty-second audio clip from a video series that has been put together by CACASA to highlight our programs and the importance of our inspectors enforcing them statewide. The full video, along with others in the series, can be found on our department's main website. Here, hopefully, if it works, my counterpart in Los Angeles, Kurt Florn, deftly explains how Weights and Measures touches our lives from the moment we wake up. You should just click it and it goes. We all shucks. So basically, what he goes through is he explains, from the moment that you wake up, you wake up under your sheets that are a certain size, you get up, you brush your teeth using toothpaste out of a certain-sized container, you go and you get your coffee out of a certain-sized container, use creamer out of a certain size, go to work, maybe get some gas along the way, that's a certain gallonage, go into your office, maybe pull some paper out of eight and a half, eleven-inch, so again, standardized paper out of five hundred paper ream, and that you maybe grab a paperclip out of a thousand-count paperclip box. So again, he just wants to explain, and I just want to explain that Weights and Measures really touches all parts of your lives. If you purchase, Weights and Measures will touch your life, and it's an important program. I highly recommend everyone go to our website where we do have this posted and not only look at this video, but also we have some on our overall programs and pesticides as well. All right. Revenue for Weights and Measures mostly comes from fees and penalties. However, we do have two small contracts with CDFA in addition to Memorandums of Understanding, MOUs, with Amador and Tuolumne Counties to use our weight truck. I added a draft image of the twenty twenty-six seal on the left. When we test, we seal accurate devices. So the next time you're at the gas station or grocery store, look at the pump or scale at the deli or checkout counter, and you should see one of these round seals. Each year, the color of these seals does change, and it lets customers know at a quick glance the last time and it lets customers know at a quick glance the last time a device was tested as accurate. I'm really actually excited for the two thousand and twenty-six seal as it falls on America's semi-quincentennial year. We're celebrating this milestone with a special patriotic red, white, and blue seal. All right, these are the last two programs I'll cover today. The top paragraph describes the USDA Wildlife Services Program run through our department, and the bottom relates to our part in the county's participation in the California Land Conservation Act or Williams Act. We are one of several departments that work together to adhere local and state requirements and ensure property owners who meet the contract minimums have the opportunity to keep land rural through the program. All right, now you know what we do? Next, we're going to learn how the department is funded. This is to show you the last two-year fiscal year budgets. As you can see, we did our part, and we did cut ten-point-six percent of our total budget in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. This did lower our general fund draw, but I would like to take a moment, a little bit later, explain how this amount is different than face value. But before I do, I do want to point out that our department's expenses are mostly staffing. Seventy-three percent of our total budget without the wildlife trapper and eighty-six percent with, to be exact. So why so high? Per Food and Agricultural Code mandates, our inspectors must possess a college four-year degree with a certain amount of science classes within it, so basically a bachelor's of science. That means four out of five of our full-time permanent staff hold degrees and additionally hold specific state licenses. To better detail the specialization necessary to be hired, retained, and do advance in our department, I've created a flowchart on the next slide. From the Agricultural Biologist and Standards Inspector position up, the incumbent is very specialized in education, training, and licensing certifications, so much so that out of a state of approximately forty million people, there are only an estimated eleven-hundred-and-fifty people who can be hired and then retained as an agricultural biologist standard inspector. Of those, only two-hundred-and-seventy-five people may be hired at the deputy level and only a hundred-and-twenty-five people who can be hired at my level. Please keep in mind that many of these license holders are already employed in agriculture departments elsewhere in the state. Therefore, it is no surprise that attracting and retaining qualified candidates requires a competitive salary. Now I'm going to touch back on my earlier explanation that our department's appropriations aren't what they might appear at first glance. For this, I'm going to cover our subvention funding from the state. Each time gas or diesel is purchased for agricultural or off-highway use, the buyer is eligible to be reimbursed for the taxes paid on that fuel. Leftover monies are transferred to state funds when not claimed and then are distributed to specific agencies, including county agriculture departments. The amount we receive is wholly dependent on how much time and money we spend in certain agricultural programs known as above-the-line programs. This Food and Agricultural Code breaks down what programs may receive subvention funding and at what level. As you can see by the underlying portion, each program may be reimbursed through subventions up to a third of the total expenditure. Here's a breakdown of the programs that are above the line and not eligible, or excuse me, are eligible for unclaimed gas tax subvention funds, and those that fall below the line and are not eligible. Are not non-mandated programs, those fall below the line, as does our mandated Weights and Measures program. As I mentioned in a previous slide, outside of the general fund, the Weights and Measures program is funded through fees and penalties. In order to receive unclaimed gas tax, the county must show a maintenance of effort as outlined in Food and Agricultural Code. So according to Section two-two-four-point-five, the county must have a licensed agricultural commissioner, submit an annual report called an annual financial statement, and show that in the report that the most current completed fiscal year's expenditures exceeded or were equal to the average of the previous five years. If the county fails and falls below that five-year average, I have to write a letter to CDFAs specifically detailing why that average was not met. That letter then goes to a panel of CDFAs and Kakasa committee members to be reviewed and ultimately either approved or denied to receive unclaimed gas tax subvention funds in the next fiscal year. This is our most recently submitted annual financial statement. Lot of stuff on there. As this lengthy list shows, the department expands and it contracts over the past twenty years as contract monies are available and staffing is either built up or trimmed down. Considering the inflation in recent years, we've kept our general draw fund poll pretty consistent. Again, this report is for above-the-line programs only. No Weights and Measures expenses or revenues are included. Crucially, as the red arrows at the bottoms indicate, we did meet our MOE this year, and we will receive unclaimed gas tax subventions next fiscal year. I broke down our subvention monies received in the last five fiscal years. Although the amounts fluctuate depending on the amount of unclaimed gas tax and mill taxes collected annually statewide, nevertheless, the more work and time performed in above-the-line programs, the more unclaimed gas tax subvention funds we receive. We average twenty-eight to thirty-two percent reimbursement. So for every general fund dollar spent, we are reimbursed through these subvention funds around thirty cents from the state. Program expenses are additionally reimbursed by time and work performed in programs that have contracts. On average, fully invoiced contracts reimburse thirteen to fifteen percent of our annual budget. See, those are all our contracts. Contract amounts change since my last presentation. Sometimes grant monies can be amended over the course of the contract. Fortunately, they only go up for the ones that have been amended. This graph may look like it fluctuates a lot, but in reality, the difference between the totals for the highest year and lowest year is only about eleven thousand dollars. These numbers include state and pass-through federal funds, plus MOU contracts with Tuamee and Amador for the use of our weight truck. Between these contracts and the subvention funds, for every general fund dollar that is spent on our department, an average of forty-four cents is reimbursed. A quick note on how many commercial devices we currently test in the Weights and Measures program. Overall, we roughly test around nine-hundred devices per year, which required just under thirty-five percent of our total staff time in the Weights and Measures program, or two-point-one full-time equivalent staff. This is to give you some background, the next series of slides. I swear I'm getting towards the end. Looking to the future changes and changing needs of our department, I'm going to focus on one growing technology: electric vehicles and the commercial devices used to charge them. As more people buy electric vehicles and as the county fleet shifts to electric, more commercial electric vehicle chargers will be installed and will require annual testing by our department. Equipment to test electric vehicle charges ranges from fifty-five thousand to sixty thousand dollars per tester, and there are two types needed. The type to test an AC or a Level Two charger, and then the type to test a DC or fast charger. Then there's the electric vehicle needed to put the charge into. An electric vehicle can range from forty-five thousand dollars for the cheapest state fleet sedan to sixty-four thousand, four hundred and fourteen, per another county's recent purchase price, for an electric truck that could also then be used to replace our existing truck for use in other programs. The good news is that it's CDFAs has testing equipment for both testing types that we can borrow. More good news is that we are just starting to see the installations that require testing. So there are currently few devices to test. The okay news is that there are close to fifty devices installed in Calaveras that are currently exempt. There was a ten-year exemption issued for chargers installed before two thousand and twenty-one, the case of AC in two thousand and twenty-three for DC that will start to need testing in two thousand and thirty-one, which is scarcely only a little over five years away from now. The bad news is there is a long waitlist to borrow this testing equipment from the state because there's a lot of counties that can't afford this equipment. If we have a charging device complaint, we won't be able to go out the same day or even the next day and check that the device is accurate, as we do now with gas station or other complaint types. Also, we will likely need to purchase an electric vehicle in the near future anyway to replace an aging gas fuel truck in our fleet. Moving forward, per Assembly Bill two-thousand and thirty-seven, we will not only have authorization to annually test private businesses, commercial devices, but public ones as well. Why do I bring this to your attention? Although still a draft plan, nevertheless, both the county and Angels Camp intend to add commercial electric vehicle chargers to campuses, the best I could tell from that really lengthy draft plan. I have not accounted for fleet-denoted chargers as we don't regulate them and as they're not a commercial use, you're not being charged to use it. For context, each plug is considered a device, not the entire charger, just as each gas pump or grade is. And so basically, each nozzle is considered a device, not the whole pump. If implemented, what do these phases translate to work-wise? At first glance, the extra work and percent of an extra inspector needed isn't so bad. However, please keep in mind that this is just the extra workload for the proposed public chargers. This does not account for private, commercial installations or existing installations, which together will likely far outnumber these public ones. If we use the thirty-four-point-seven percent of total staff time applied to the six full-time equivalent staff we had to inspect the one thousand and thirty-one devices in two thousand and twenty-four, that means we would need an additional full-time inspector for every additional four-hundred-and-ninety-one devices added to the county. This slide's simply an estimate. Time will tell how many public and private commercial chargers will actually be added in the upcoming years. Almost there. A budget is an estimate, just as this is our department's estimate on future needs. Hopefully, my lengthy discussion here clarifies the background on any future ask for an electric vehicle, hiring additional staff to cover device inspections and pest detection work, and a request to unfreeze our permanent full-time equivalent administrative position. We made it. Last slide. Please note that we have moved in Marched, and our department's physical address changed to five-five-six Mountain Ranch Road here in San Andreas. If the community has questions or concerns pertaining to the programs we regulate or our department can be reached via email listed in this slide by phone or through our website, which was recently updated and is much easier to navigate by the program. We now have both a Facebook and Instagram account for our department that we try to update with relevant information as it is available. Thank you for the time to listen to my very dense and very lengthy presentation. We are very passionate about our role in the community, and I hope that showed today. Can I have any questions I can answer for you guys?
Questions, supervisor top note? Oh, supervisor stopper.
Just got, you have to talk to council about putting me on the invasive species list.
We have to be listed by a CDFA, or you listed on CDFAs, you're a-rated weed?
You'll have to talk to her about.
Okay.
Yes, invasive weeds.
Yes.
Starthistles are just all over the West, they're just invading up here, and you can't get rid of them. Is there some program or something you guys are looking at the state is for these things? Because they're absolutely just overnight.
Yeah, it's omnipresent.
Yeah, so.
So with any, even if it's not an invasive weed species, I mean, some actually are native, but they can be selected for if you have a pasture because the animals will eat all the good stuff and leave the stuff that doesn't taste so good, and they'll take over your pasture. So any weeds that you don't want, you can call our department, and we can help you get just like, just general integrative pest management type of actions you can take. If you want to go a little bit further, we do have operator identification numbers through our department. So that means that if somebody has like a little ranchette or even if you have a thousand acres, whatever it might be, you can come to our department and you can get that operator ID, and it'll allow you to purchase a wider variety of herbicides to go out and treat those specific species for. So like in the case of yellow starthistle, there's actually a couple products on the market that are very, very selective, and they only kill plants that are in the Solanaceae, so kind of like sunflower family. So it specifically kills thistles. So that's something that people could reach out to. And then I always say that UC Extension and our Master Gardener programs are really great resources as well.
Well, the issue with them is later on in the year, say August and September, where everything else is gone, it's brown, it's dead. These things just keep going.
They're smart little weeds.
Expansion of them, you know, so they're very invasive. And so, and I don't think, they're not from here, they're not.
No.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just the amount over the last three or four years, especially in the west part of the county, of just invading here is just crazy, so.
Yes, yellow starthistle doesn't like to get its roots too wet, so especially when we have like drought years, that's when it really shines. So you see it really start to bolt and bloom when it does dry out because everything else has run out of water and it dies. So that's when it takes.
And they take off.
That's when they take off. And it's actually really surprising that yellow starthistle, one of the main reasons why it is so invasive is because it makes delicious honey. And so a very long time ago, people actually imported it to plant it so that their bees.
Make honey off of it during the heat of the summer. Yeah, but they.
Go buy the honey.
It is delicious, I'm not going to deny that.
And then you mentioned gas and getting credit for the gas for agricultural. You didn't mention diesel, and a lot of agricultural equipment runs on diesel.
Yes.
And so is there credit for the diesel also?
Uh, yeah, so if there's through the state, there is a way that you can go through and you can file paperwork to basically reclaim. So a lot of diesel people will actually buy the, was it Red Number Two, which is specifically for and has no taxes on it. But if they do purchase something that they do pay any kind of gas tax on, including diesel, they can go to the state, and there's a form you send in with your receipt, and you can basically ask for that to be reimbursed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else I can answer?
Supervisor Randall?
Jessie, thank you for coming to Mountain Ranch a little while back, respond to the community. What was the weed you spoke about there that was yellow?
Oh, it was Oblong Spurge, another one that if, once you see it, it's everywhere in this county. That one does like water, and it's really all the watersheds around here. Yeah, we do our best, but we can't find it all, and a lot of it's on private property. So obviously, a lot of permissions and everything else to work with there.
Is there specific herbicides towards that that we know of at this time?
That one is more of a, it's a general herbicide, there are materials that can control it. But like I said, it gets to a certain point where all we're kind of doing is kind of like drawing a line in the sand, and that's how it is with that one. We do actively, unlike yellow starthistle, which that's like a foregone, it's everywhere. But yellow Oblong Spurge is actually, there's pockets of it as opposed to like just everywhere in the Sierra Nevadas. So we're doing our part not to share with other counties. I know Amador has a little bit, but I mean, other than that, I mean, it's kind of just us and a little bit in Amador. So we're trying, we're trying our best with what resources we have.
Yeah, it being in the watershed, though, you have to be careful what you spray.
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Exactly, you can't just go out and start spraying. It's got to be, yeah, because of the watershed.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and there's actually specific general herbicide products that don't have surfactants in them, so you can actually use them to watersheds.
Well, and a lot of, in District Two, there's a lot of roadside properties that won't want you to spray because of their gardens or their bees.
And there are other ways for us to control. Obviously, every time we go out and we look at a certain situation, we take into account any sort of sensitive environmental sites that are nearby and also the property owner's wishes. Sometimes, and all we'll do is if it's the, some species you can actually, like actually yellow starthistle, if you pull it, it's just, there's so many of them. If you pull it when it's just, it's young, it's just that little rosettes, that's actually an excellent way to get rid of it.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work.
See apple for weed.
Oh, yeah, and that's the problem, and especially because the seed bank on that is seven years. So even if you get rid of it for the year, another seven years, exact same thing before you're going to really see an impact.
I have a picture of my father thirty years ago saying, "Oh, I'm going to pull these, I'm going to get rid of them", and thinking he was going to get rid of it. No.
Well, if even if you get rid of it, then you're always going to have the onesie twosies because like if it's in like bird poop or comes in on like a tire, oh, yeah, it's ongoing.
Any other comments? Uh, I did want to say two excellent, excellent reports today, thank you so much. And on your crop and livestock, I would love to talk to you about the wine grapes. And if you have any other ideas, I know we talked about yucca and what have you in the past or.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of agave, the people.
Agave, that's what I was going to say. In any case, but I'll call you back about that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I'm hopefully rebound with the wine grapes, not very. Well, actually, it's interesting, speaking of wine grapes, I'll just say, everywhere that I've heard, not only locally, but even like in Europe, it's been a banner. It's a vintage year for grapes. The grape quality is excellent. The problem is just nobody's buying.
Yeah.
And that's actually true, a lot of people are drinking spirits more than they are beer and wine.
Yeah. Is there any public comment regarding this item? Medina?
Hello, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. I just want to thank Jessie and her deputy, Carrie Basset, for this presentation. Getting that message out to our public is critical so they can make an informed decision and that they can have access to those resources. So thank you, Jessie and Carrie.
Thank you for your support.
Yeah, is there any public comment online? Say none.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for listening, that was a lot, I know.
It's great.
Mr. Hubbard. I'll be recusing myself from item twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, and I have nothing to report. So with that, I'll take my lead.
I hope you get home safely. If you don't, give us a call. We can come pick that roadside.
Yeah. I'll skip. Y'all have a wonderful day. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
It's just informational.
Item number twenty-three is informational item from the administrative office. Discuss and give possible direction regarding the county's continued membership and the Calaveras, Amador, McCallum River Authority camera.
Director CEO.
So, um, this was just to get board direction. I know we have a couple of board members who participate on this particular, um, board, JPA, and, um, there have been some discussion over the fact that they were needing some additional financial support, potentially other support as far as legal or administrative support. I believe that that committee has made a recommendation for how they might move forward. But, um, given that it has, um, currently been looking at its structure and kind of what its mission is, it was just a time to bring this forward to the board to get whether or not the board felt that it was worthwhile for our members to continue to participate on the board. But that in fact is a board decision whether or not we choose to do that. So that's why we brought this forward. So with that, I would, I know Supervisor Follendorf and Supervisor Endel both participate on this particular, um, committee. So I would, um, ask that they provide their thoughts on continued participation.
Supervisor Follendorf.
Okay. First, I want to say thank you to Gay. He's been stepping in the last couple of meetings too for me. And so if you have any input from the last meeting, um, let me know. But overall, this has been a conversation that's been happening for a couple of years now. Going from twenty twenty-four and then twenty twenty-five, um, is really trying to figure out what the direction is for this group, for the JPA, what does it mean? Fast forward to February of twenty twenty-five, um, the decision was to really reevaluate, and to see if all the member agencies wanted to, um, continue. From February until last week, um, discussions were had and the majority of the member agencies want to continue, um, the JPA, um, and work towards really making some more meaningful, um, priorities, um, for the organization to work on. And the first step is in that is amending the bylaws of the JPA. One of the major issue is, um, quorum. It, so currently in the current bylaws, um, it's a requirement of each member agency to have two members representing at the board. And so that means twelve people. And getting twelve people to show up and then the quorum, it's been difficult for the organization to move forward on anything meaningful, which has been a handicap. So one of the proposals in, um, in the bylaws is to reduce it, still keep twelve members, but make it with one member, one director per member agency to be there, which means instead of going from twelve, you go to six and then quorum becomes four. You can still keep the same numbers, but instead of having two board members showing up, you have two board members that alternate. Does that make, did I say it correctly? Okay.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Follendorf, can I clarify?
Yeah.
So the, the Brown Act does generally require that you have to have a majority of the members of a board in order to have a quorum. So the, the number of members.
Sorry, it's seven. Did I say that?
No, I just want to make sure. So, so the idea is to actually cut down the number of members.
Because right now, yeah, directors. So, because right now each and this entity, entity, um, sends two members. But if multiple agencies don't show up, then we are not able to meet quorum and you can't.
What we did. So currently Supervisor Follendorf and I are both members and then Supervisor Tofanelli is our alternate. It would reverse to where say Supervisor Follendorf is the member and I and Supervisor Tofanelli are alternates.
So each member agency would have one director.
Yes.
Two alternates. And so then it would be a majority of the directors that would constitute.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can meet quorum easier.
Yeah. We weren't round and round about this last week and knows where they sit. I would.
I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page with respect to the fact that we can't have, still have twelve or however many directors and consider, you know, only four of those to be a quorum. But I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, it would move the number to alternate, but still have the same people, um, put it.
Able to.
Able to attend in, in someone else's place. So that's one big thing. The other thing, um, that was a big change is, um, I'm drawing a blank. I had it, yes. Is changing it from meeting quarterly to meeting a requirement of once a year. And then the quarterlies would be as needed. Because a lot of times we show up and there's not a lot going on. And so we're constantly canceling meetings or amending the meetings. And rather than having special meetings, go to an annual and then, um, I've needed quarterly. So that's another major change in the bylaws. Currently, just for everyone's information, we do not pay dues. Dues were suspended over twenty years ago. I think it's been, it's been a cut over a decade. So we're not paying any dues. There's no, um, not a lot of monetary exchange. And in the bylaws, we did the amendment also, if there was to be a monetary, it would still go back out to the, the member agency primary board. So say this board decides to invest in a project, um, along the, um, the McCallum River watershed. It would come, it would come to the board of supervisors before any entity had to pay anything. And if there's not a majority consensus from the primary boards of those entities, then the project won't go forward with any funding. And so that's a monetary, but it's, it's. The root is, or that's been discussed is what are we doing? What is our primary goal? What is our mission? And I think essentially, and correct me, um, for those of you that have been around a lot longer and participating with this organization, a lot of it was to oversee and ensure, um, the McCallum River and the watershed is protected for all of the entities. And, you know, a lot of it got, got protected over the scenic, the scenic. So a lot of the McCallum is now a scenic. So you, you can't do certain things. So most of it is going to happen above the scenic or below the scenic. But I think the core mission of all of the members and why they, this is what I gathered. So Gary and Autumn, correct me, is one is to stay, stay connected to make sure we're all unified in protecting the watershed and the water rights for all of the entities to make sure that all communities have those, can continue to preserve that for future generations. It, it shifted in the last couple of decades of doing actual projects and things like that. A lot of that has been shifted up to AMMA and what AMMA is focusing on. And a lot of the same members are on AMMA. So I think it just, um, I see it personally. I see it as more of a sister agency to ensure that all of our main priorities with water rights, protecting the watershed, preserving, um, our resources for all of the communities that we serve were unified. In that way that if it ever does become an issue, we are already unified in a front to move forward to protect that. Um, and I think that's really the, becoming the bigger mission. It's not project focused, it's preservation of resource focused. But the boards can certainly, if that isn't something we want to continue to, to send ourselves to, we can reevaluate that and we can have staff work on a memo to camera, um, saying otherwise. But that's, that's, um, really what it comes down to. And there's been so much discussion and nothing come, had come here to educate the rest of the board. I wanted to make sure that it was on everyone's radar. Um, so if there should be any concerns that we're discussing it in an open session and we're not going through the process of violating any of that. So there's no like aha, like big thing. It just, we're remolding what I guess it, it means. And is that something we want to do? I know we don't actually have water rights, but we have communities that we are serving to.
Could I ask you a question? Who's doing the reporting for the JPA at the moment?
Um, CPUD is the member agency providing the services. Um, and that is something else that we're going to have to shift and we are working on. We're, we're reevaluating some of that stuff. But in our last meeting, we discussed maybe that's what CPUD, right? Does more of that stuff and ensure that we are in line with what those requirements are doing.
And the financials go through Amador?
And the financials go through Amador.
And they're still happy with that then?
Yeah, they're fine. Um, Brian does his report. We, because there's no member dues coming in and there's not anything coming out, there's not a lot of financial. There, there's not a lot of financials. It just stays pretty steady. And though, that what money we do have, it's a little over forty-five thousand dollars. Is from the last time all the entities paid dues and it's just sitting there. So if we were to disband, then we would have to do, um, go back and see what the last time all those contributions and we would have to make sure that that money got equally divided amongst the agencies. Or, um, we could just throw a big old party, we kind of party of the agency. So it, it's whatever headache I get, we wanted to do. So yes, if the, if the member, I, I believe if we were to go out, I think there would be some financial stuff that we would have to request the Amador to reimburse us. But yes, everything goes to Amador. They keep the record. They have all of that information. And the board recognizes that we do have, um, how do I say this? We have some areas that need to be improved and we discussed them at the last board meeting. Sarah, um, has attended some past meetings and has, um, made those, um, echoed those concerns. And the board took it pretty seriously of that at least at a minimum would be our next step in the February meeting is how do we address some of it? And, um, we're going to do some research for reporting, see what some of those requirements. If we're not actively in doing money exchange, how much, say, a set audit is really needed? When the money's just been sitting there. So there is, the board recognizes it and we are working for it. Anything else to add from the last meeting? I don't want to just keep flabbing.
I, I just think that, um, the intention behind the annual meeting, another kind of caveat to that was like, that's a time to look at potential projects and decide, is there a project that we can become involved in? And if there is, then that kind of forms that year for the group. How often we meet, how we invest our time and what we need to be doing. So, uh, you know, should a project not present itself, then it's, does it remain status quo? And that was the annual meeting and we moved from there. So that seems that it might check the boxes of kind of some of the steps we need to take.
Yeah.
They've said it all.
And I, I, I like, I like seeing what everybody else is doing. I mean, we talked about how the last board, this board meeting, um, how we had that presentation from TCWD and there was a discussion about Sigma and GSAs and what did that look and how Amador County and all of those districts handling it. And, and so there is some added value of learning from each other and, um, I mean, they were all like, how you guys doing this? What did this look like? And we all, we don't know, we're just, we're, we're letting staff work it out. And so there, there, there is something to be said about that type of interaction, um, outside of the norm. Cause we don't see them every day and it, it, there is some benefit in that, but, um, I, yeah, to what Autumn said, it's, we're going to have to look at what the projects look like and if there's something that's actually feasible.
It sounds like sort of.
I, I was saying, that's why, that's how, why it was said. Uh, I think there was a project at that, that time that, that was, um, going to be put in there, but, um, counties and agencies were not behind what was going to happen. It was going to, um, take some of our water rights and use some of the water from it. So, um, that's why the whole agency was set up.
So Chair Hubbard, I just want to make sure that we've gotten clear direction. It sounds, um, from the board's discussion that with the proposed changes that Camera is making in order to improve the organization's operation and also to ensure that they're meeting quorums so that the meetings can take place. It sounds like the board is in favor of moving forward and continuing to be a part of the JPA. That's what I'm hearing.
And I also want to recognize that Craig Baracco is also online. So maybe we open it to public comment. He can chime in.
Great. Is there any public comment in the room? So is Craig on?
Yes, Craig, you should be able to speak now.
Hello, Craig Baracco, Fiddle Conservancy. Just wanted, uh, largely to just, uh, echo what's, um, been said. For those not familiar, uh, Fiddle Conservancy, um, is a environmental group. We've been active in Amador and Calaveras County since nineteen ninety. Um, our main areas of concern are, uh, land use planning and watershed, uh, with a special focus on the McCallum River. I was able to recently address, uh, the Camera Board in August on the, uh, proposed, uh, McCallum Pump Storage Project, which would, uh, shift water between, uh, Lower Bear and Salt Springs, uh, reservoirs. I think, um, that sort of illustrates the, the sort of use that, uh, Camera, uh, Camera can be used for in, in sort of evaluating and discussing, um, potential projects. I think generally speaking, there's been a bit more water peace, um, you know, on the McCallum than in past decades where there were, uh, very large and genuine fights, um, over potential projects. But I think, you know, uh, peace now doesn't mean that in the future, new, new things won't, won't come up that'll require, um, a united front from, um, Amador and Calaveras County water users to defend their rights and water quality. And so, um, I'd support the changes needed if it makes it less of a burden for, um, individual board members. I know, you know, all, all supervisors have a, a ton of JPAs and committees to serve on. And if, um, the planned adjustments make things easier, um, to keep the organization, I think it's, um, also easier to sort of lessen the number of meetings or requirements. And then, um, bring and, um, become more active later than to completely shut down the organization and then try and reconstitute it. JPAs are notoriously hard to start because you have to get everyone to adopt, you know, the, um, uh, the exact same government documents and the like. So, uh, it's easier to adjust than end and restart from scratch. So, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. See no other public comment. I'll bring back the board. It's an informational item. We've got the direction.
I think so. So just in terms of next steps, um, Supervisor Follendorf, my understanding is that those proposed changes to the JPA agreement are going to be going back to the Camera Board in, uh, February. So then, um, just procedurally, I assume if the Camera Board adopts those in February, then they would come to your board and each of the member entities' boards for approval.
Correct. And I guess at this time between now and February, uh, this works procedurally. So we're not, Autumn, I'm not getting in. If, if there's, if there is feedback from the board for the Camera, Camera Board to consider changes in the bylaw, maybe send them the U to send a camera. U to send a camera stat to Carissa for, I don't know how we do that because I don't want to say I collect them because they're not borderline.
No.
But if there's any feedback than what has been provided to the board, that was reviewed last week by Camera and there was more input, somehow get it before the February to kind of help streamline. Otherwise, if this board, correct me if I'm wrong, if it, once it comes to us after February, we have any changes, it's got to go back and forth. So I guess I'm just asking to make it easier for feedback now so it can push it on. I don't know how that works. I'm not trying to add more work.
No, 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 it's not that. I'm just trying to think through. We obviously can't have a forum of either board crafting policy outside of a meeting. So I think, I think if any of you do, I would say if any of you board members do have anything, let me know. And if a majority, if it seems like there's a majority of board members that do have that, we can put something on your agenda to pump, to give that direction then to Camera in advance of their meeting.
Like in January, before the February, if that's okay with everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. And I'm guessing since there hasn't been a lot of, you guys are okay with Autumn, I'm moving forward with supporting this direction. I mean, that's the biggest thing is what do we, we want to make sure we're voting, the rest of our colleagues want us to vote. And I know you put us on those boards to represent the best interest, but when you start talking about dissolving and removing JPA, it's a bigger conversation than just the two of us can vote on.
Well, I appreciate you bringing it forward and investigating it and learning about it and looking at the bylaws, what have you. So thank you.
Thank you for giving us the time to, I don't have anything else.
And just let us know then if we don't end up agendizing something for January or whenever, if the Camera Board does in fact approve that JPA agreement or those changes in February, let us know and we can agendize it for this board.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll move on to supervisor announcements. Supervisor Tofanelli?
I don't have a whole lot to report. I did go to a COG meeting. I did go to a ribbon cutting ceremony. But what I did do is I did have a meeting with Caltrans and the fire chief in Valley Springs. And Mike concerning the project in Valley Springs there on the side of Highway 12, on Highway 12, decided to intersect. And one of the things we were meeting about was Caltrans did not have any conversations with the fire chief prior to that project. So he was not aware that they were not installing what they would call a button to control the lights if there's an emergency and they need to get the fire truck out onto the highway. And during those conversations, we've come up in agreement, I think, that that's going to be fixed. So he'll be able to, because one of the lights, there's three lights there and one of the lights is almost directly in front of the driveway for the fire department. And he needs control of those lights to turn them red so he can get out and all that traffic is not going. So I think we've got that done. But one of the conversations we had had to do with a median in front of the fire department there. And when Caltrans started talking about a median, my eyes kind of rose up. But the median is a painted striped medium. It's not a raised medium or anything like that. It's no concrete. It's just a medium that's striped and painted flat on the road. So the fire trucks can get in and out. So I thought that was great.
Thank you, Gary. Yeah.
That's all I had to report.
Thank you. Supervisor Fallendorf?
We already had an agenda item about Kama. I attended that last week with Supervisor Andal. And we also had a LAFCO meeting last week.
We did, I'm sorry.
Do you want to talk about that?
No, you brought it up.
Well, you're determined.
Yeah.
Okay. So two things happened. First was Tony Tyrell was given, he wasn't able to make the CalAFCO meeting, but at the CalAFCO meeting in San Diego, Tony Tyrell got the Lifetime Achievement Award from CalAFCO, recognizing his years of service. He's been on the special district for the vets for 46 years.
He's been on there for.
Yeah. And he's been on LAFCO for almost three, over two decades, close to three decades.
I think it's like 27, 28 years.
And so he got a Lifetime Achievement Award. So that was presented to him. And then it was also our executive director's last meeting. He had been with, he was hired in 2028, in 20, 2005. Yeah. So he's been with us for 20 years, representing Calaveras County, 21. And so it was a hard goodbye. We convention, I think Jack actually tied him up at the last, last year at the meeting, hoping he would stay. And he did. He said six months and he stayed another year till we could find a replacement. So we approved the contract for a new executive officer that night as well. I'm blinking on our last name right now. Jennifer, her name's Jennifer. Oh my God, I'm so embarrassed. Anyways, we approved the new executive officers. So she had worked with John with a number of other counties. She had, she's an executive officer for other counties. So she, she comes with a walk of a big man. So we're excited to have her onboard and that's all I have.
Supervisor. Supervisor Andal.
I attended a Calaveras Mariposa Community Action Agency meeting. I attended a scholarship fundraiser at the Glencoe American Legion. I attended the winter storm meeting at the Sheriff's Department that Public Works hosted, the Camera meeting and a ribbon cutting in Roro Flat at the new community center gym. And then we had the Willseville hair scramble dirt bike races this weekend that were a huge success.
Sir, did we get anything on the adoptions?
I'm sorry, I will, I don't have a number, but last I heard, which was Friday, there were a chunk of.
I believe it's still 12 children looking to be adopted by December 1st.
We, I got an email saying they have all been adopted.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And yeah, I did get an email this morning on that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about kids adoption. I mean, dogs adoption.
No, Christmas, Christmas gift adoption.
On the 7th, I attended the Resource Connection Food Bank Benefit. Amazing. They raised a ton of money and it was a great evening. On the 8th, the cold case dinner, shout out to Captain Sturm and all the task force that made that so successful as well. On the 10th, I attended a meeting at MACT. And the reason why I bring that up is that the new museum in Angels Camp is going to be stellar. And the opening is on December 6th. You will not believe that you are in Angels Camp. It looks totally futuristic in their displays and what have you and how they've done it. It's, it's, it's really top notch and I can't wait for it to be open. On the 11th, I was, we had a fantastic Veterans Memorial at the Murphys Park. And then on the 14th, we did the CMCAA meeting. And there's a bit of a kerfluffle there that we're trying to iron out at the moment. We are, we will be meeting again on December 15th. So we'll have an emergency meeting on the 15th with HHSA and thank HHSA for working out so well with us to, to get things moving forward. And then I wasn't able to be there this past weekend, but I do want to give a huge shout out to the pine cone competition that they do at Blue Lake Springs. It's fantastic and the kids really get involved. Marlene Cover and Marcy Powers put it on. John Sproul found a sugar pine cone that was 22.75, sorry, 22.75 inches. And just to point out, Guinness Book of World Records for a pine cone is 22.9. So we're skirting that. So hopefully next year we could find something that's, that's great. This is our last, I believe we only have one more meeting in December 9th and that will be the, it for the year. Do we have anything? Now, CEO, Council, Robin, Susan, Holly, what are you doing for Thanksgiving? I hope, I wish everybody a really, really happy Thanksgiving and thank you all.